And the wind here. The time is now nine thirty-six and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Ed meeting of April fourteenth is two thousand and fifteen is called to order. Item is approval of a general order priority, and I understand we have a few amendments that, John, you wanted to get on the table.
Yeah, I'll move the agenda with the additions of some discussion with Karen McPhee about the governor's plan for Detroit, which will be kept around eleven AM whenever they're called, and thank you Karen for doing that with us.
Thank you for the opportunity.
And wanted to add an item for our discussion section this afternoon on our policy guidance on state schools turnaround. Both those modifications, I move the agenda.
Moved by John? Is there support for that? I'm sure there is. Michelle's supporting. Looks like the first controversy of the day here. All in favor, I?
Aye.
Oh, same? Great, thank you. Mertz.
Good morning. I would like to introduce the people seated around the table. As we go to my left, the state superintendent and chairman of the board is Mike Flanagan. And keep going around the table, the board's president, John Austin, he resides in Ann Arbor. The board's vice president is Cassandra Albridge, she's from Rochester Hills. The board secretary is Michelle Fecto from Detroit. Richard Ziley is our board member from Dearborn. And the Michigan Teacher of the Year, who is Melody Arabu, she's right there. She's a third grade teacher at Keith Elementary in the Wildlight Consolidated School District. Go across the table, we have Karen McPhee, she's the Senior Education Policy Advisor for Governor. And then Eileen Weiser is the chair next to Karen. Eileen is on the phone today. Kathleen Strau-- Eileen's a board member also. Kathleen Strauss, board member from Detroit. Lupe Ramos-Montini, board member from Grand Rapids, she's the board's NASBY delegate, that's their association. Next to me, on her way to the meeting, is Pamela Pugh-Smith, the board's treasurer, she's from Saginaw. Thank you.
We've been doing guests. Judy, you're anything but a guest, you've kind of been a regular for a number of years, maybe we'll start with you.
Hi, I'm Judy Pritchett from McComb Intermediate School District.
Hi, I'm Dev Shawn from Educational Testing Service in Prince County, New Jersey.
Who's that guy in the back there? I don't know if I know him yet. Brian, welcome. Welcome, Brian Whiston, soon to be state superintendent. Welcome, Brian.
Anne Boyers, Ann Arbor Schools.
That's the class, Ann Arbor.
Tom Green, MEA.
I'm a college student, OPTS.
Well, is that right, so we're just skipping the non-guests? I don't remember now. Yeah, good, well, go ahead now.
Well, I'm Allison Henry in the superintendent's office.
I'm Leah Breen from the Office of Professional Federation Services.
Good morning, Kaza, Deputy Superintendent for the Office of Educational and School Support Services.
Susan Roman, Deputy Superintendent of Public Safety Service.
Linda Forward, interim Deputy Superintendent for Educational Services.
Frances Kiesler, Deputy Superintendent of Governmental Services.
Cindy Larvik from the Office of Public and Governmental Affairs.
Benjamin Williams, Office of Public and Governmental Affairs.
Chris Kleber, Gomwa News Service.
Jacob Cansler, reporter for Mertz News.
Paul?
Paul Steinquist, Michigan Catholic Conference.
Superintendent Speck may be with you and your team, and we'll go through the back of the room.
Randy Speck, Superintendent of Madison District Public Schools, and we've got some students here with me, along with our lead teacher, Angela Abdullah-Had. And I'll let the students introduce themselves, maybe we'll get to that.
When we come up in a minute. How about our other guests in the--
Mary-Ann McPhee from Michigan Education, David Feller, Massachusetts Public Schools.
Paulson Slaughter, also Massachusetts Public Schools, candidate for school and interim superintendent.
Margie Fellinger from Fort Hills Public Schools and Mary-Ann McPhee from Michigan.
Good morning, I'm Lauren Childs, Department of Public--
Thank you. Thanks for taking the time to be here. And our first item today that Randy just alluded to is a highlight for us. This is something the board gets to do. We try to do once a meeting or so, and that's have, like, real students. So this is a great opportunity, we suggested at our agenda planning meeting. It's a great way to start. Today we have students from Madison District Public Schools in Madison Heights. These eighth graders from Wilkinson Middle School sent their science experiment and art project aboard an unmanned commercial supply rocket bound for the International Space Station. The science experiment was selected from over fourteen hundred proposals, the student teams through the Student Space Flight Experiments Program. The art project was a mission patch designed by a Wilkinson student and worn by the astronauts. The mission patch was one of eight selected from fifty-eight thousand submissions. The students are going to fill us in. You know, Cassandra, who suggested this, would like to add some further thoughts.
Just that I'm grateful that we were finally able to make this work. I know testing kind of prevented us from doing this last month. But Randy Speck, the superintendent of Madison Heights, and I met recently, and we were talking about the wonderful experiment that the students had designed, which unfortunately blew up on its way to the space station. No fault of theirs, of course. But I thought it would be very nice if we could invite them here today to give a presentation on the wonderful work that they've done and that has now been recognized both within the state and nationally. So with that, Superintendent Speck?
I'm just going to mention that this watch I've had for decades, and it's literally one--
Oh, yeah.
--that's made at the same time as Neil Armstrong's, because this is the way they actually looked at time on the first mission on the moon. That's how antiquated our system was. They looked at a watch like this, and this one on the back is engraved as "Man's Space Mission, the first watch worn on the moon." Now, it's not literally the first, but it's one of the five hundred or so that was made at that time.
And I appreciate you giving that to us as a gift.
Well, thank you Superintendent Flanagan.
It's good, Randy, thank you.
Superintendent, we don't make a lot of jokes, but when we see one coming down the road--
Yeah, why not grab it?
So we, what an honor it is to be with you around the table and for those who are watching, because this, this has been, this has been a journey, this has been an adventure. In many ways, it's, it's the gift that keeps on giving, because these students are going to have the opportunity here in a minute with myself and Mr. Abdullah-Had to talk about our, our project, and to really talk about the journey that we've been on now for about fourteen or fifteen months. I'll introduce the students. Again, my, my name, Randy Speck, Superintendent of Madison District Public Schools. Angel Abdullah-Had, one of our lead teachers, and who, who was the teacher in charge of really executing this, this, this project. Tanner Barndollar, Regina Alfa-Dai-Fra-Saba, Israel Alfa-Dai, sorry, Regina Alfa-Bah. I've been learning Arabic a lot for the last six or seven months, and I haven't done it well. I haven't done it well. And Maryam Kafra. Even though I've gotten, not gotten all the last names, we've become in many ways a special family. Their families have embraced us, and, and our school district has, has embraced them. We'll start with this slide, and I put it up there in a, in a general setting, because as a kid, and I, I won't necessarily put all of us in the same generation, but space was, was, was something that we looked at, whether it's in the Neil Armstrong era, or for me, the spatial era of, wow, that's really cool. That's really awesome. I remember doing drawings as a kid of the Hubble Space Telegraph, and turning that in for a, for some kind of a science assignment and different things like that. The space station was an opportunity for us to take a look at our science program, our technology, engineering math, and say, is there a possibility that we can actually do some relevant education, some real education? So a concept came across my desk to where we could give our students at Wilkinson Middle School in Madison Heights an opportunity to compete in a, in a real-world research experiment design program. For me, growing up, I, you know, a science fair was maybe a volcano with some vinegar kind of a thing, or the, or some kid would always bring in a popcorn maker doing a tornado thing that their dad had helped them with, and really irritated me, because I couldn't do all those kinds of things. But that's what I saw with science. And now we had an opportunity to do a real-world experiment that was going to be flown on a rocket, that was going to have also experiments testing drugs for Alzheimer's and Parkinson's. So this just wasn't, you know, just a seventh-grade science experiment kind of affair, this is going to be a real deal. So we partnered with a group called SSEP, Student Space Experimental Program, and I'm going to turn this part over to Mr. Abdullah-Had, and let him kind of talk about the process we went through, and then we're going to talk about the journey, and the girls and Tanner are going to have an opportunity to speak as well.
Okay, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm Angel Abdullah-Had, and by teaching trade, I'm a Spanish teacher. So in February of last year, Randy approached me and said, hey, we should take this on. I had no idea. But he wanted all the students at Wilkinson, and we had about three hundred students, and said, I want them all to participate in this. And out of enrichment, we kind of set the students together in, in pairs, and I'll talk about that. But first, kind of missed a little bit of history of the Student Space Flight Experiments Program, which started in twenty-ten. So what we participated in was Mission Six. So we were the sixth mission for, since the birth of this program by the National Center for Earth and Science, and it's trying to get the students engaged in STEM, in science, and engineering, technology, math, and all, all the modern-day jobs. So we launched this, we grouped the kids randomly. The first part of the competition was an art design, a patch that is three by five, or three and a half by three and a half, that you would send out, that would represent your community, space exploration, and Mission Six. And it's customary for an astronaut, when, when they fly out, to design their own patch. So, so that is where it stemmed from. So astronauts will create a patch for themselves, and they'll go out there. So that was the competition. But they had some parameters, it had to represent the community. And so we launched it, we, I think we had, because we allowed kids to turn in multiple, I think we had close to four hundred that, out of our building alone, because people turned in multiple ones. Sent it to a random, so I had nothing to do with it, because I didn't want to be blamed for anything, so--
[laughing]
You know, selected groups, and everything was kept secret, names were kept secret, and Tanner Barndollar was selected as a, as a winning patch. So I'll let him talk about it a little bit, and then I'll, we're going to pass two of them, because the first one was caught in that explosion. We didn't know if it was going to get recovered, but it did. So they did recover it. So they stamped it "Recovered." So this is, one of them is the one that actually blew up in October, and then the other one was a scanned image that they did to fly up there so they could mark a stamp. So Tanner, you want to talk about this, and then we'll pass them on.
My patch--
This is the recovered one.
My patch was just like regular, other, regular patches, like circles in the beginning, and I was trying to incorporate Mission Six in Wilkinson while I was at it, and when I saw the circles, reminded me of the base of a six, so I could just add a tail on it, and it could represent as a six. And while I was thinking of it, I can also incorporate the W by adding two other tails, so both the W and the six can represent Wilkinson. And in the middle of it, it represents SSEP, Space Station, Madison Heights, Wilkinson, and it has the Earth in it. So it incorporated Mission Six, SSEP, and Wilkinson.
So that one, if you stare at it, you can't really tell, you know, you can't see the divide, but the W for Wilkinson, it was really, it was, it was nice to see that he won. I, I don't think, he didn't speak about this, but he didn't want to do it at first. So I, I don't know why he forgot to--
He didn't want to do this. I'm not going to win anyway. I don't want to do this.
So, um, you didn't tell him that one. Want me to tell us? So he kicking and screaming, I don't want to do this, I'm not going to win, you know, someone else is going to win, just give it a try. And so he started, I think we, we took about two and a half weeks, and we had every, we presented it to every student, and some turned in multiples, and that was the winning patch. One of them is marked "Recovered," because it was on the October flight. The other one is marked "Stamped, flown by, flown in space by Nanorax." So it actually was on the space station, and they send it back stamped, and then if we wanted to, we would make it into a, we would convert it into an astronaut patch. So that was the first part of the competition, it was the art design. The second part of the competition was, okay, you have to design an experiment that has to do with microgravity, with zero gravity or near-zero gravity, and where it has to meet the parameters of, that are set aside by NASA and Nanorax, which is the company that provides the materials for NASA. So the girls and everyone else, we put them in groups, we had a total of sixty groups. Out of the sixty groups, we, we had a two and a half month, three month, maybe, intense, every day, every day that you were in Richmond, that's what you were doing. You were researching, you were collaborating, you were, because with NASA, they want details. They don't want, if you're going to say bacteria, that's not good enough. They want to know the origin of that bacteria, because they can't allow something to go up unless they know the origin of it. All those things were new to all of us. I'm going to let the girls talk about this, but, and, and let me highlight that they were seventh graders when they started this, although now they're way more mature, they were way younger when they started all of this. So do you guys want to talk about, you want to talk about a little bit about the--
Yeah, and before Isra starts, they were seventh graders, and they had only been in this country for, for varying, varying times. Some, some for just a couple of weeks, some a few months. And so English was, was not an option when they first came here, and this will be a part of, of the story they tell, but I want you to understand this as well. Part of these, part of going through this process is to understand instructions. Well, they only write them in one language, it was English. And so they would use our iPads and our technology to help translate into Arabic, and then they would be able to translate it back into English, and that was part of the journey itself. So Isra, why don't you go ahead and talk about our process?
Good morning, my name is Isra. First, we didn't know each other, so Mr. Abdullah put us on a group, and we started to work together as a group, and it was hard to do it, because we had translated all the work so we can understand, me and my team. We thought we can clean water, because in space, they need water, it's so important to humans. So we decided to pick cold-fried bacteria, because the germs in the bacteria could make people sick on the Earth. The astronaut may not have medicine, doctors, or hospital, but they need them. We want to use water that has been contaminated with the cold-fried bacteria and iodine tablets, to see if it will clean the water. So we typed everything, and we were having three days more left to give our work, and Regina didn't save the work. So we lost the work, and I was crying, because I thought we'd done from everything, and we started to do the work all over again. Farah was didn't know how to use iPad on computer, so, okay, so when we typed everything and give it to Mr. Abdullah-Had, he told us, was, he told us, we give, we have to pick from five hundred people, fifteen groups, and from the fifteen groups, we will pick three groups, they will pick only one team. When Mr. Abdullah announced we were from the three people, we were so excited and happy to done this experiment.
One of the things that happened in their experiment, as they were looking to put together experiment on clean water, how can you make clean water, and what happens if, if in space, the water becomes polluted? And you'll hear background to that in just a minute. They, they did their experiment, the, the, two days, three days before it's due, someone, one of them, lost it on their computer, it completely went away. So now, she talks about the fact that they were in tears, one of them just said, I'm going home, I'm going home. They worked over the weekend, they got it turned in, they, they redid it, we all remember term papers that got lost right before they were due. So, so that, that happened to them in this real-life experiment, because NASA doesn't mess, mess around with deadlines either. So they turned it in, and it was submitted, and they were chosen. Different images on the screen, the one in the middle is my favorite, we need to see the, the four of them looking at their experiment, looking at the process that's going through of taking the bacteria. They, they had to, they had to set up these experiments in small tubes, and, and many times when we were setting it up to, to send it to NASA, we were Skyping with some people in Houston who were watching everything that we were doing, watching everything they were doing, and guiding the young ladies through the process. It was, it was, again, relevant education, technology at its best, where we're all communicating in all different areas to try to get the same result to happen. October twenty-first comes, we were setting, we had had, a few days earlier, we'd had a big event where all the families were together, and this was going to be the launch date, and we got pizza, we got food, we've got all, a lot of great things happening. Twelve minutes before launch date, there was a sailboat that was out in the water, and that was in the launch zone, so they had to scrub it. They scrubbed it a couple more times, but then on October twenty-first, I'm sitting in my office, they're at home, it's nighttime, and I'm just going to, I've got my computer, and I'm going to watch this launch finally happen. Custodian comes to my office and says, can I watch it with you? I said, sure. So he comes, he stands over my shoulder, we're watching it, it goes from ten minutes down to five minutes to one minute, and the countdown goes off. It goes up, six seconds later, it explodes, and one of the great understatements that I've ever heard was my custodian saying, well, that doesn't look good. And then he just walked out of the room. And it didn't look good. In fact, it was not good at all, and I immediately started to call and text Mr. Abdullah-Had, he was in contact with the girl. Isra's first comment was, is anybody hurt? She thought someone might be on that. And I started to think, what character, what quality from these young ladies that they were exhibiting? The next day, actually, Fox Two had been running stories on these young ladies, and was getting ready to show something, but because of this, that changes the story quite a bit. But the next morning, at seven AM, we were down at the studio, and, and we were talking, Amy Andrews, Fox Two reporter, was talking to the young ladies about the, about the experience itself. She was able to break to them live on television, and I had been able to give her this news that, that even though the rocket exploded the night before, there was going to be another opportunity, and we had just gotten confirmation of that right before we went on air. I want Regina to talk now, really, about, about her background, and about the reason, and Farah will go into this, why they chose clean water, because it was more than just a science experiment. So Regina?
Good morning, I'm Regina Alfa-Bah. When I was in Iraq, I only went to school for first and second grade. They told me that I have to wear hijab, and I'm, and I'm Christian, so my parents told me that you can't wear hijab because you're Christian. So I stayed home with my four brothers and my parents. They taught me everything, how to write and read. Then, like, after a couple more years, like, six or five men came to our house, and they hit my dad, and they told us, if we don't leave our country, they're going to cut our head and just kill us. So after a month, we went to Turkey. We stayed there for a year and five months. Then we, I didn't go to, to school, I stayed with my friends, I learned everything with my parents. After a year and five months, we, we came here to America. I went to school, I met new friends. The school, like, the difference between our school in Iraq and here, it's a huge difference. The teachers, the students, the principal, everything, like, when I, when I talked to my teachers, I feel like they really want a, a good future for me. They try their best to teach me. Yeah, anything else?
That's good. The-- The next day, as we were kind of processing everything that was going on, we started getting phone calls from all over the country. And we were sitting in my office, and the young ladies were talking to a reporter from NBC News on my phone, and all of a sudden, out of the blue, this passion comes out of this petite person, Farah, and she, and Mr. Abdullah-Had can do some translation if we need it here, but she just starts talking about the passion behind all of this, because it was really at this point that I start to realize, this isn't just a science experiment. I knew Regina's story, we had heard it before, but now we start to hear something quite a bit different.
Can I just--
Yeah.
--give you the background? So when we started, Farah was only here three months. So she went to Oak Park for a couple, couple months, and then came here. So absolute zero English, zero technology experience. I remember the first time I gave her an iPad, she said to me, where's the buttons? You know, how do you use this? So to see them here, just so you could understand their background, so the information they share out, they've come a long way. But most of these girls were here in the state less than a year. So Regina just came last year, and Farah was a few months after that. Isra's probably was here the longest, at a year and a half at that time. So everyone was new, and then they, they've done this great feat.
[speaking Arabic]
Oh, you want me to translate?
Yeah.
Okay. What was your question?
She's going to talk about why clean water, what's so important.
[speaking Arabic] Yes?
[speaking Arabic]
Okay, so I, I showed them a video that Jeff Goldstein showed us about drinking your own pee, and so we were told to show it, so that was the video we, we showed them. Drink your own pee in space? So that was the first, okay?
[speaking Arabic]
She says, so I started thinking about water, and, and, you know, humans, they, they need water. Okay, so I, we, I haven't been in Iraq in a long time, so-- So she said, as, as we were learning about water, my mind turned to my experience in Iraq, and how we used to drink the water that was polluted in Iraq, and how we would get sick from that water in Iraq. And so that's what kind of stemmed her. So she, she said in the beginning, they get emotional about this, so they, they, then they stop talking when they get emotional, so I could, I could see they're getting emotional. But, um, so she said, we didn't know about iodine tablets, we didn't know about cleaning water, we didn't know that. All we knew is that you can't drink, you know, dirty water, and so they started exploring that, that idea. But what drove them was that the experiences, and, and maybe you could tell them about the one Malburi. So that's this, I wanted her to tell us, but that's the story that she told me, she said, you know, the same faucet that people bathe and shower from, it's the same water that they drink, and she said she would witness these little kids drinking, get sick.
[speaking Arabic]
She said it would come with the dirt, it would come with the sediments and dirt, and they would have to filter and set aside.
[speaking Arabic]
We have to filter it?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Some, some of the, some of the neighbors got sick from the water, so that was, that, that's what stemmed their, their whole desire to want to clean water. Now, the story that, that Mr. Speck's talking about is, so she never, she never talks, we did all these interviews, she doesn't say anything. And then she had this explosion with this lady from NBC World, and she, I mean, she went off on a, a thing in Arabic. I couldn't even translate fast enough, the, the lady on the other side is crying. Mr. Speck's crying, and I'm like, I haven't translated anything. She's just going on in Arabic. And I think that's, if you tell that story, Farah, I think, and I'll translate, but--
Okay.
Okay, hold on. So she, she, this is what she told a reporter, she said, I want, she said, what do you, what do you want the world to know? And so she said, I want everyone that could hear my voice to--
[speaking Arabic]
Okay, so don't give up hope as, as students, because--
[speaking Arabic]
Because all our dreams there were kind of messed up, but, you know, don't give up, because--
[speaking Arabic]
When we came here, then we, we got this new dream, this new hope, and so she said, I want people to not give up, not to lose hope, because it's, it's a new dream here. And so that's what she wanted the, the kids in Iraq to say, this is, this is what you, you have a potential of, of having. So she's saying, instead of people killing people in Iraq, she said, how about people helping people? And so she wanted to reach out to the kids. We would tell, we would tell all our teachers there, like, hey, we wanna learn something or... We, we, we wanted to learn something, that right away they would yell at us. So here, you, you guys don't yell at us, thank you for that. Out of, out of fear, we would just sit there and not say anything because we didn't wanna be reprimanded. Yeah, can she say something? But you can speak English. We're practicing the ESL.
So there are the teachers, like, they won't give you a reason to why to do something that you really want and, like, to think about your future. All they want is, like, to teach you now, like, they don't give you hopes for later. So what she, what she was trying to say, like, when she asked, like, if she want to do something, she wants to try something, like an experiment, they don't give you hope to do it. They say it's not for your age, you don't know anything. So they don't, they don't give you a chance to try something, because they don't have anything to teach us about, like, now, about technology and space. So that's what I wanted to say.
This is the best of education, because you take what's happening on the news and you take, you, what you see what's happened in the Middle East, and these are survivors of what happened in the Middle East. They come over here and they give opportunities, they get an opportunity, and even though the rocket explodes, they've gone through worse. They've gone through worse. And so they were great teachers to me in this process. January 10th, the rocket finally gets on the pad, it finally goes up. Early, early in the morning on that Saturday, it finally goes up. On January the 12th, it, it, it hooks up with the space station, the left-hand picture is, is it when it came back down to Earth and landed, landed in the water. Maryam, do you wanna talk about how you felt when you finally saw that it went up? And Mr. Abdullah Haddad will translate.
Yeah, I think she wrote it down. You wanna try reading it? Okay. Either one. What, shino tarijin? A tarijin, no? Okay, tarijin, okay. Yalla. What was your question?
How did you feel when we, when we, when you finally saw it go into space? What were your feelings about it?
So we were happy when we saw it there, very, we're very pleased. So, very pleased that the experiment came back, because they were, they were eager to have that return and Tanner's patch came back and they actually had an opportunity to analyze the information, to look at it, to see if it was successful or not.
They've become really the best of friends. I don't see them in a hallway with everyone, it's, it's not just one, it's all four. It's all four. They, they've come together. And this story has gone over the world. Locally, Madison Heights City Council have honored them, State Representative Jim Townsend has honored them, the Iraqi government, the bottom right-hand picture has honored these young ladies. Their story has gone throughout the Middle East, all of Europe. Forty to fifty million people have seen their story outside of our own country. And it's been really exciting as...
Can I say something though? It's, it's not the four of them, it's Mr. Speck in there. He just infiltrates in my enrichment classroom and he dives right in with them. They don't, they actually didn't even know he was a superintendent. They thought he was just, you know, then I told him, I'm like, no, he's a superintendent of the hall. You know, because they would see him in the hallway and run up and give him a hug and then teachers, teachers are like, whoa, superintendent. You know, and these girls, they just, hey, Mr. Speck. And I had a beautiful picture that I took, but we came out of an interview and they bombarded him, like smothered him with a, with a giant hug. And then I showed him, there was this, like, light, a sunlight, you know, like, it was very powerful, it was very moving, for them to, to look at him as family, not to look at him as a superintendent. They don't even know what that is till they find it. So he says they've been a family, them four or them five. He just takes over when he comes in, I can't do anything, because he goes in there and starts talking to all of them and, so you can't say anything to the boss, right?
It's been a wonderful experience. I know we probably take a little bit more, more time than was allotted, but I wanted them to be able to share and for you to hear this, because this is good. This is good. Madison Heights has been somewhat designated as an area where Caldean families, Iraqi refugees, will, will come. And it's an area that we're trying to grow, it's an area that we believe we, we have a service to offer. They are a part of that. Tanner is a Madison Heights resident and, and he has been a local celebrity there with his family and, and our folks there in the community. It's been a great thing for our school district, I think it's been a great thing just for, for public education.
This is really...
Yeah. I was just gonna say, this is why I invited them to come today, because these are the amazing stories that are happening in public education that might not show up in a test, but you can't deny that there's something really special here. And so I commend all of you for the great work that you do and also the superintendent for having the vision to say, you know what, this is important, even if it doesn't follow the prescribed, you know, method of making sure that we, we get our proficiency rates or whatever that might be, because this is, this is education. This is so much more important than that. So, I commend you for that.
And if I can just add, I mean, what a nice bonus to hear the stories of these young ladies and, and, you know, I think it's important for me to say while you're here as young ladies, that right next to you, our Teacher of the Year, I think your parents came under similar circumstances. Would you mind just briefly speaking about that? This is our Teacher of the Year and...
So my parents are both from Iraq as well and Christian background, so we are Caldean. And my mom only went to school through eighth grade, so came here and, and had to learn the language and start a family and, you know, assimilate to the culture. And I'm part of an organization called Teach, which is Teachers Educating and Creating Hope, which is trying to bring educators together to help the displaced children in Iraq and also the refugees that have come here. So it's an honor to hear you speak today and I'm very moved by what you've accomplished already. Can't wait to see more.
So your comments about hope, you can become the Teacher of the Year here in Michigan. Thank you so much, this has been great.
Appreciate it.
And I appreciate very much your time and you guys did a great job today. I already tweeted about it. Thank you very much.
And you won't be offended if we don't stay for the rest of the evening.
I'm gonna, just, well, let's see. I'm gonna jump to just personal privilege for a moment. State government provides to each department director, and as I've said before, you know, I've got kind of a double role, I'm the state superintendent and I'm also a department director. Number of commemorative coins to present to people who he, in this case, serves with. And among them are coins for teamwork. These coins are for people who value team results and sharing credit, work collaboratively and respect and engage their colleagues, support decisions and those who make them, value camaraderie while reinventing our state. And in my 10 years as state superintendent, I've said this over and over again, I can't tell you how impressed I am with this board working together as a team. This is not something that happens everywhere. And even when you disagree, I mean, I think that's democracy, that's a good thing. So it's my pleasure to present these coins to each of you as state board members. Thank you for your leadership in this respect. And if you could come up here for a moment and receive these, I'd like to give it to you with, that includes also Karen and Melody when she returns. John, thank you very much. Sandra, thank you. Well, this is a teamwork coin, you got one for, this is a teamwork one in addition to that. You have, and I, Melody, I'll get when she returns and, well, I guess Marty can take a quick picture. Eileen, Photoshop you in.
Okay, it's a deal.
And Melody, if you could come over here, this is, I'll explain to you in a moment, this is a teamwork coin that I get to hand out as state director, state superintendent, and I just wanted to honor you and the team for working so well together. We're gonna move, that's genuine appreciation and I think a lot of folks who are elected could learn a lesson from each and every one of you on how to work together and even when there's difference of opinion, respect each other's views. Thank you for that, it's been an honor. The next item is a presentation on the Educator Preparation Institution Performance Score Report. I know you've been looking forward to this for the last couple of months. That's a joke, but. So following the October 2, 2013 revisions to the annual EPI performance score and the subsequent publication, the component and overall reports are ready for review. These scores will continue to be reported to the field of Michigan's EPIs via printed report and MDE memo and are linked to a system of corrective action that was revised in, in August. So with us, Vanessa and Leah are gonna present.
Thank you, Mike. Good morning, board members, and thank you for having us here to talk about the Educator Preparation Institution Performance Score. This has been an important piece that we have had in place around our educator prep institutions in various forms for a number of years, but it has been redesigned in the last couple. And just wanna take a minute, so this is the second year of seeing the score, I wanna take a minute and thank the team that worked on this before I turn it over to Leah. So under Leah's guidance, Phil Chase, Sean Tottke, Catherine Weigent, Roger Smart, Steve Stejink, Dana Uterbeck, Michael McHale, Sarah Kate Levan, a team of EPI educator prep institution and K-12 reps. So they, OPPS does a really wonderful job, probably most of you have not seen this, it's, it's not super visible, but they do a great job of coalition building, collaboration with EPIs and K-12. And walking that line, they really provide a model, walking that line with accountability between accountability for compliance and accountability for continuous improvement. And that's hard to both hold somebody accountable, but also say, but we're here to help, this is about getting better, not just about a, a rating or a number. It's really about improvement for, for our, our teacher candidates and our students ultimately. So, and then a couple other cross-office, we really focus on cross-office here, so a couple other offices have helped them, Erica Boligan, Will Metz out of the Oesra Office and then the composition team out of the Standards Assessment Office. So, team effort, Leah's gonna take you through all the information, but we are excited about this as a tool to help our, our preparation institutions continuously improve and, and get our, ask ourselves the ongoing question of, are we preparing Michigan educators in the best possible way for what they're going to be facing in the field? So.
Thank you. That was a, it takes a village to build an EPI score. It's a lot of people involved in this initiative. So, why do we do this? The federal government requires, specifically the Higher Education Act, Title II Act, requires that we identify and assist teacher preparation programs that are not performing at a satisfactory level. Excuse me. So we are required to develop an annual list and on that list, we have to identify educator preparation institutions that are both low performing and at risk of low performing In August of 2013, as Vanessa mentioned, we brought you some changes that we are intending on implementing to the EPI score that we had over a number of years. We had some ideas about how to improve the system. We're now in the second year of implementation of that score and going into this year, we really wanted to, we had three main goals. We wanted to strengthen our multiple measures methodology and make sure that everything was measured in more than one way. We wanted to improve the alignment to the current priorities of MDE, the board, and we wanted to consider the feedback that we had gotten from our K-12 stakeholders and our educator preparation institutions from the first year's deployment of the score. Just to refresh your memory, or in case you weren't at last year's presentation, we have three overarching goals when we attribute a performance score to an institution. We look at content and pedagogy and that portion is weighted the most highly, it's actually 50% of the overall score. We ask that they demonstrate continuous improvement toward MDE-specific priorities, which encompasses a number of categories, and that's about 20% of the score. And then 30% of the score is educator effectiveness once in the classroom, so we look at their educator evaluations and there's more about that when we move forward. The weighting does vary, for small institutions that have very few evaluation, we weight them a little bit differently, we lower the weighting on that particular category and raise it on the others to make sure that it's not unfairly weighted for a very small end size. The data sources that we use in the score are the Michigan Test for Teacher Certification. We use a three-year aggregate of passing percentages. We use survey data and right now we're using the teacher candidates and the candidate supervisors, which are the EPI faculty, and we use their educator evaluation data. For the MTTC, we only use the content area tests, we do not use the professional readiness exam. As I mentioned before, we use the three years of passing percentages. It does reflect the best attempt of candidates, they can take those tests as many times as they want, so we use their best attempt on record for the institution. Any programs that were closed are omitted from the score. And for this particular year, we had some changes in the social studies and elementary education tests that were considered in the calculation. For the surveys, we use two data windows. We collect survey data in the fall and winter and the spring and summer, depending on the cohort of graduates. We have aligned those survey items to the in-test standards that this board approved and those in-test standards review seven categories. They cover high-quality learning experiences, critical thinking, connecting real world problems and local and global issues, using technology to maximize student learning, addressing needs of special populations, organizing a supportive learning environment, and effective use of assessment and data. So we ask the candidates about their preparation in those categories. We also ask the teacher candidates how they feel those individuals were prepared or how they perceive they have been prepared after they see them in their clinical experiences. On those surveys, we use a four-point Likert scale. When we prescribe a rating for each category, we use the percentages of somewhat agree to strongly agree against the total number of responses. The educator effectiveness labels, we look at the first three years a person is teaching within five years from certification. When we attributed that back to a preparing institution, the size ranged from two individuals to 1,280 individuals. So you see, we have a very wide range of the number of candidates that fall into this first three years within five years. The lowest institution had 82% teachers effective or higher, and the average was about 95% of teachers that were effective or higher. There's not a lot of variation in those evaluation measures. We attribute points to each of these, just like we do in the surveys, highly effective is a full point, effective is .8, goes down from there. And then we apply a weighting for different years of experience. We actually weight the second year the highest, year one, the middle percentage of weighting, and year three, the lowest percentage of weighting. The concept behind that, that was based on feedback from our institutions, they feel as though when you get into the third year, you're starting to lose some of the preparation and, and get more performance-based on the particular system that they're working in and that year one, there's some interference with learning, the routines of school. in, and that year one, there's some interference with learning the routines of school. So, we adjusted the weighting based on their feedback. So, here you see the results this year of the overall scores. You can see the highest score, the mean score, and the lowest score. So, there is a bit of a range amongst the institutions overall. And here, this is tiny, tiny. Each college, their overall score for 2014 in red and their overall score for 2015 in orange. They are alphabetical, so that can help you pick out names if you're interested in a particular institution. There is variation. Some performed better last year, some performed better this year. There doesn't seem to be a particular pattern. The black bar is the cut score for this year. So, what do we do now? We have all of these data that I just presented to you. Now, we actually have to engage in a standard-setting process to determine what those data mean. That's when we bring in a group of K-12 educators and our colleges and universities. We review all of the data. We include some mock institutions to try and mask the identity of the institutions. We fabricate data and present them as an actual institution. There's more than you probably ever would want to know about this process in this very informational technical manual that was emailed to you, I believe, so if you want to know more about that. It's in Appendix A of your technical manual. But basically, that team gets together, they look at all the data, and they give us a cut score recommendation, and anybody who falls below the cut score will basically result in some form of corrective action. For this year, that cut score was set at 84.5, just higher than last year's cut score of 84.
So, the cut score changes every year?
It changed, not necessarily, but when we add components like we did this year or we make changes to the actual score itself, then yes, we have to engage in a new standard-setting. If the score and all of the pieces of it did not change, we would not have to reestablish a new cut score.
I don't understand. So, if I'm a college, how do I know? Because I'm looking at Mary Grove, for example. Mary Grove, under our old system, was improving every single year, to the point where they were out of the at-risk. And now I look at this, and it looks like they're below again, and I'm wondering, have they changed, or is it just because we've changed? And if -- and the reason I ask that is because as a college, I would wonder, again, is this a moving target that I can't figure out from year to year if I'm doing the right thing or the wrong thing?
Yeah, I think -- I hear your concerns. I would say that we work very closely with the institutions that are below the cut, and I feel like they have a good sense, through our support and technical assistance, of the areas that they need to improve. I don't think that Mary Grove's performance in particular are indicative of a problem with the score or the fluctuating score. I think there are some systemic issues we're trying to help them correct, and we see that also show up in the accreditation process, and there are required changes for accreditation. I haven't heard that concern specifically from the institutions, that they feel as though it's a moving target, so that might be an interesting piece of feedback for us to actually reach out to them and have a conversation about. Generally, they let us know their concerns. That hasn't been one that I've heard.
I think the overarching point is that, as well, though, the score is new, and as we bring on new components, more data-driven components, things like the effectiveness labels, what we're calling out in the institutions through this process has changed as we move toward the score and as we bring more pieces online. So, the cut score kind of moving around as we bring pieces is probably just an outgrowth of the fact that we're looking at different measures with these schools, and so that's why the team engages in so much continuous improvement work and technical assistance with the institutions, because it's really about understanding what your data are showing you, not just about the label.
But what you measure is what they focus on. So, if you're changing the measurement every year, then you're creating instability within the system. So, my only point is, there better be a good reason for it.
And when do they know? I mean, that's a legitimate point, and I think I know the answer to this, so it's rhetorical, but when do they know what that measurement will be?
Well, before Leah answers that, I want to make sure. I think we're conflating two questions a little bit right now. We're conflating what the cut score is. So, at some level, you know you want to be high on all your measures, like your goal is to be good on all the measures. So, it's the question of, "What are the measures, and do they know what the measures are ahead of time?" And the answer to that, and they can go into more detail, the answer is yes, and they're also aware of what's coming on board, but we are still in a trans -- I would say, some transition years where they're getting used to the pieces of the score. And you're absolutely right. What we measure is what they work on, which is why we revise the score so it's more aligned to the department and the board's priorities, so we're all working toward the same goals. So, if you want to talk more about that.
And if I could just, where I was going for a moment. Well, no, please.
No, it's okay. Go ahead.
No, no.
So, the changes for this year, we actually didn't change what we measured. We just added more data points to demonstrate that we had better measurement around our overarching goals.
An example.
So, for this upcoming year, for example, we are adding, in addition to the teacher candidate survey and the faculty supervisor, we'll actually be trying to triangulate that data by adding a survey of the supervising K-12 teacher at the building. They're all measuring the same thing, but we want a third data point around that to see if there is any variation in what everybody perceives the student is able to do. That will require us to do another standard-setting for a new cut score. That survey, the institutions reviewed, helped us build, provided feedback, and it's actually being deployed right now, and they'll see their results on the survey well in advance and have the opportunity to appeal anything before we put it into next year's score.
That's an example where the triangulation, if anything, increases the chances of the accuracy as opposed to the one measure. And then, another example, even though -- I'm sorry, I went down to see the kids briefly before they left, but I don't know if you brought this up or if it's on the next item, but the reason we haven't included, for instance, the feedback from the students yet is it just wasn't a big enough sample. Maybe you said that already.
No, I haven't said that yet.
So, that's an example where we didn't use that one, because we only got 700 responses. It gives us some global thinking that you'll see on the next item, but not attributable to any one institution. So, I think that's where we get feedback from them, is that would be unfair to include in a year when we only have a small number.
This is coming up in a future slide, but it's opportune now, teachable moment now, I guess. The federal government has issued new regulations around this. They're expected to be finalized in October. They specify that we will be required to include things, data points, that we currently are not, so that will require us to overhaul the score yet again. So, we're waiting for them to settle on a decision around it. One of the things that we see in that federal requirement is -- I know. Exactly. Much --
Don't hold your breath.
Yeah. Yeah. Much less emphasis on the content area test, which we actually use is 50%.
Less emphasis on what, Leah?
Pardon me?
Less emphasis on what?
The content area test.
Oh.
Mm-hmm. We have 50%. In their new measure, we will expect it to weight that much less in the overall contribution. So, that will be interesting for us, because we've always very heavily weighted those tests.
This is one place where I've started doing this to my teams more, and I think it makes them uncomfortable, but I do want to brag on Michigan a little bit here, that we were ahead of the curve in terms of the changes we made to the score, and appreciate the leadership of the board and superintendent on that, along with the office. Not that we're totally in line with where the federal regs are, but in terms of other states, our connection between K-12 data into this, we've just -- we've got some things in place that will make the transition for Michigan less painful than for some other states. So, kudos to Michigan to be being out ahead of the pack on this one, although being out ahead means you take a few more darts, but.
Sure. Richard, sir.
I'm not sure I understand. The third measure, the performance score educator effectiveness labels, is that teachers out in the field and then they are evaluated by the system here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So, we actually pull the evaluation data. We look for those teachers in their first three years of teaching, and we attribute it back to the institution in which they were prepared.
Okay. So, I guess I was reading Detroit public school teachers had something in the neighborhood of 90% of theirs were most highly effective and --
Well, there is the flaw in our plan.
Okay. I just --
So, what we're hoping, and when we first went into this, we were a little bit more optimistic about the progress of a state evaluation system, and we actually had built in a little bit more around that state evaluation system. And but what we see is very little differentiation in evaluation. I think the spread when I headed up there was 94% to 86% or something. So, I mean, that is some difference, but it's not huge. We don't know why and where.
Well, I would speculate. I mean, I've said this prior at this meeting before, that if I'm a principal and the fluctuation that's been in this evaluation thinking across the street, I would be leery and think it would be unfair to label people ineffective when I don't have a fair measure yet to do so. So, I think what we're going to have for a few years is less differentiation, and I think that's okay, from my point of view. Now, if we get to a point where there can be, especially with the heavy data on student achievement growth, or factor, rather, if you got to a point where actually you could measure that fairly, and maybe not quite, it's gone from 50 to 40, I think, in the current, you know, I probably wouldn't have it at 40 if I had my way, but the point being that I think that's why you see a fair amount of that. It's been criticized in the press a bit, but I don't know how you would go out of your way to label someone ineffective based on some of this stuff until we have a fair system in place. That's why you have it. I think to Leah's point, if we picture that five years down the road, that sorts itself out, then one could make a case that, "Did some of that have to do with the kind of training that they received two years earlier, three years earlier?" And even then, I mean, I was with the deans at Central a month or two ago, and, you know, it was a good meeting, but they legitimately have issues about, you know, "It takes all of us some time to become an effective teacher," and then even after that, there's other factors that don't have to do with your training. So, there's like a sweet spot in there that we would acknowledge. Having said that, they're all, ultimately, in five years, they'll all kind of measure the same way, so if you saw a big variation, it would be, it would give pause. You know, if I were president of one of those institutions and I had a large number of teachers that were ineffective, I'd want to figure out what we might be doing. I'd want to go to the institution that had better results, and this is meant to be an improvement issue. And, you know, kind of melding that with the federal stuff is what our goal here has been.
Follow-up question. I'm looking at page 11 on the presentation. Is there a correlation between institutions that have a lower number of, or lower scores on the Michigan teacher test and the survey results and the effectiveness ratings? Are -- if an institution is low in one, is it likely to be lower in the other two? Or is there any study or correlation on these? Do these measures correlate at all?
We have not done a correlational study. I think that we would have to probably remove the evaluations from that, because there is a little evaluation if we tried to do a correlation. What we see is less by institution and more by overall themes when we look at the data. So, when we ask about candidate preparation, we hear a lot about areas for which they might not be, have been prepared, that are kind of universal across all institutions, more so than institution by institution. So, that has been very interesting for us, and we'll cover some of that actually in the next presentation. You'll see those areas.
I would, just as a suggestion, I mean, in one sense, if a lot of your students are scoring low on the content areas or other areas covered by the test, one would expect then those teachers to be, I mean, presumably less prepared. That would presumably be reflected in their surveys and in their, you know, "You didn't prepare me for what I'd have to be expected to be done." You'd expect to see that perhaps reflected in the evaluations as well, so it just would be, that would be one more thing to help validate, I think, the overall process if there were, just to studies to how much, just know how much correlation there is.
Yeah, absolutely. We have, if a candidate never passes, they don't actually end up with an evaluation rating, which is another thing.
True.
Right? That we have to think about. But one of the things embedded in this score is the fact that if a performance in a particular content area for an institution is very low over time, we actually make them close that preparation program. And so, you'll see them kind of bounce, because they've closed programs, and we extract that data from their score, because they're no longer preparing candidates in that area. So, you'll see some fluctuation over time, because we do ask them to close underperforming programs as well.
Michelle, please.
So, the test that's taken, remind me, does it cover, my understanding is it covers more than just their teaching area, where they, you know, the subject matter in which they're teaching? Is that?
They take an elementary education exam, and then they would take any additional content area tests if they were going to add additional endorsements, and secondary teachers just take their content area assessments.
Okay. So, it's specific to that?
Yes.
And I should just say, while I'm thinking about it, that when you look at this team here, particularly Vanessa and Leah, they're, what they also bring, in addition to a lot of the gifts they already have, is this idea that we want to get into the research and connect some of the dots. And we do kind of covet the days when I was a local superintendent and there was a whole division to do that here, for those of you that remember that era, where you had Teresa, I think it was Teresa Staten, when she had been head of that, did any, very pretty rich research. I'd say we're in the process of building some of that and have some, but this is where, if you're really trying to help the institution and not just gotcha, then you have to try to figure out ways to connect the dots, and that's why we have these relationships with U of M, a number of other institutions, to try to figure some of this out. Yes, ma'am.
Because the education, you know, oftentimes, they'll come from other institutions to just get their certificate and education, so the content that they've learned is not necessarily at the, you know, the teacher prep program.
Mm-hmm.
It's somewhere else, so then the teacher prep gets penalized for something that they may or may --
You are all picking up on the most controversial topics at the table today. So, "Adavel" is another one. So, we've had a lot of discussion around that, and what we have, what we have stated is that if you are going to be the institution that grants that person the endorsement, it's your responsibility to ensure that whatever preparation they came with lends itself to them being ready in the classroom. If you're not confident about that, then you probably shouldn't be recommending them for that particular endorsement or that certificate. And that's been challenging for people to get around and support, but at the same time, somebody has to be responsible, and you're actually the one giving them the certificate. So, we've tried to, we've had lots of conversation around that, and I would say it's a point of consternation still.
And there's certainly a tension. So, the granting of the certificate or the recommendation from a educator prep institution is one of our points of quality control for the students that teacher's going to teach, as well as for the teacher themselves. Are they, are they equipped to be successful in that job, particularly in an environment with evaluations happening? And so, you're right, trying to, who owns, this is why Mike kind of joked, "Oh, you're ready to hear about an accountability measure." No one really ever is excited about the accountability measure, right? But trying to apply appropriate accountability at the institution level so that we can guarantee for those graduates that they have what they need, and so the students who see them and there's, especially those first few years, are, you know, have a teacher who's ready to do what they need to do. So, again, that's where there's a lot of conversations as we bring this on, to try to make it fair, but also high standards for our students and teachers, so.
Melody, please. Did you have some?
Just something that's kind of swirling in my head that might be a whole different topic is, content knowledge is a very important part of teaching, but such a small piece. When I've worked with student teachers from different programs, they don't always have a good understanding of instructional strategies. So, knowing what to teach is one thing, but knowing how to teach it to kids and the differentiation that's needed for kids with special needs or for kids that are super high-level and need enrichment, having an understanding of a workshop approach to teaching, just the instructional strategies seem to be something that's missing or very inconsistent in different programs. I don't know how that's something you can measure, but to me, it's way more important than the content, because when you enter a grade level and start thinking about what specifically you're teaching, it's very easy to learn the curriculum very hard to find the right ways to teach it to different kids and their needs.
Yes. And we're working on that.
We would agree with that, but maybe talk briefly about the barriers to that right now.
Yes. So, we are approaching that from several different perspectives. The first is, we're actually working with, we have a group of stakeholders that are K-12 and from our educator prep institutions that are establishing standards and expectations around clinical experiences for both the candidate and the supervising teachers, to make sure everybody has a common understanding of what you're supposed to be able to know and do and experience in your clinical experiences. We require that pedagogy is embedded into their preparation programs, and that is addressed in our standards. What we can't get to is the measurement of how good the pedagogical instruction is. What we can't get to is the measurement of how good the pedagogical instruction is. There are assessments of pedagogy that are available. We would like one. We, our test fee cap that's legislated prohibits us from actually having one because they are more expensive than our fee cap of seventy-five dollars will allow. So, we are trying.
And that's a legislative issue that we're trying to address.
Yes, exactly. So, we're trying to reach out to individuals to garner support around a pedagogical assessment. It is required for institutions as part of their accreditation. They must have this, and so if we don't help provide one, they are going to have to come up with one independently, and that's challenging because it has requirements around it for validity and reliability, so they would prefer. We just pick one, we have one, we all participate around one, but it's the fee cap that we have to get lifted.
Maybe while we have an audience, again, just briefly on the fee cap and what it would need to be in order to address that roughly.
Roughly, other states range from about a hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty for assessments. In Michigan, we have fifty for one and seventy-five for another. So, we are about, we are half what it would take to probably improve both the quality of just our content area assessments, and probably we would need, the pedagogical assessments are brand new, so we're not clear of the actual range, and they would have to be bid, but we're guessing somewhere between two hundred and three hundred and fifty dollars for a pedagogical assessment. And that does involve actually watching the performance of candidates and having external representatives scoring their pedagogy and reporting it back, so it's not the institution that's necessarily doing that, which is kind of a nice approach.
Thank you.
I think they've got a little more of their presentation.
Yes, Eileen.
Hi. I understood that University of Michigan was working towards trying to do some field testing of the new ETS practice comparison exam. Is that happening this fall or in the future?
I don't have the exact timeline, but they are participating with, well, U of M has Teaching Works, which is something that they are, they have developed and are deploying, but there are institutions that are piloting a number of programs, and this, it's frustrating for them because they're piloting things, and if the state ends up adopting something else, they're going to have to switch over to whatever pedagogical assessment we adopt. But they do see the value on it, they are moving forward with it because we cannot.
Thanks.
Okay, so we'll try to get through this.
Okay. All right, so above all, we want transparency. So, each institution gets an individual score report that tells them their raw score, how it was weighted, the resultant score compared to the overall cut score, their corrective action label for last year, their corrective action label for this year. So, each institution receives one of these, and that was Appendix B in your packet. There's one of those for each institution for you to review. This is kind of an overview of our corrective action system. That's Appendix C in the technical manual, and a couple of years ago, we moved toward a progression. What we saw was a lot of fluctuation. It used to be somebody who met the cut score would be satisfactory, everybody else would be at risk for low performing, and you could bounce back and forth between the two just in any given year based on your cut score. We wanted more of a progression. We felt that they needed at least a couple of years of support and technical assistance before they should be able to move out of a status that they had achieved, and we've seen great results from that.
That helps get at the point Cassandra was.
So, here is an overview of the major changes in corrective action status for this year. Everybody else was at satisfactory and maintained satisfactory. Baker College last year was at a Level One. They are now at zero because they made the cut score this year, so they are successfully out of all corrective action status. Concordia progressed one level into low performing. Ferris State University is now at a zero. They are out of correction, corrective action. Mary Grove progressed one level into at-risk status. Ra Chester has been working their way up, so they are at two now from four-three-two in the last few years. And U of M Flint is back at low performing status. And then those individual reports, you can look at the specific areas for which they might have struggled this year. Corrective action this year, we will continue to customize that corrective action to meet the needs of the institution. It really depends on which areas they struggled in the matters, and that's how we provide support. We do kind of a menu of choices, rather than what we have are previously prescribed actions for institutions. Those weren't always helpful. We were asking them to do things that weren't necessarily contributing to their lack of success on the performance score. For the 2016 EPI Performance Score, we talked about this just briefly, and this goes back to Cassandra's question about a moving target. We had hoped to deploy a year-out survey where we look at candidates. We survey them when they graduate, and then we survey them a year out to see how their perceptions have changed. We have deployed that, but the return rates were so small, we couldn't put it in the score calculation yet. We're actually going to look at the results of that in a minute though, because they are very interesting, and we think, we thought you would like to see them. We are going to add the K-12 cooperating teacher survey, which I mentioned before, and then we will have the new HEA regulations that we'll have to look at moving ahead. Okay. Okay, Mike?
Any further questions from board? I know we kind of, John?
Thank you for all your work on improving all this and actually making it useful. On balance, are the institutions feeling these days this is fair and even useful accountability framework?
Well, I think we get mixed results. I think we would have some institutions tell you no, and I think we, I know of a couple of institutions who have said the results of this have called attention to our university president of needs that we have within the School of Education that have really, you know, it's increased our funding, it's increased our attention, and we've been able to do things that we haven't been able to do for years. So, mixed results, I would say.
I just wanted to note, because for some of us who've been around this table for a while, you know, this is, this is just one element of what needs to be and is a continuum of important puzzle pieces if we want to support quality teaching, and from good standards for people beginning, or accountability system that tells us whether the institutions are performing, but really, we need to do even more on support for mentoring, ongoing professional development, that's why we need the evaluation quality system, because it's got to be a piece of a continuum, and I just wanted to reemphasize, it's not, we don't do these things because the feds ask us to, we do these things because they're part of a step of, a set of things we must do to better support and improve quality teaching. And this is just one element of that, and an important one, but it's one, and I think we need to probably even do more on the other elements that are very important to support quality teaching.
It's a great summary, and maybe we just move then into kind of the connected one with Phil joining us at the table also. Would sound right, and then you can still intersect questions that might come up between both items. So, this is C. This is the one on the survey one year out that Leah just mentioned. I think Phil's going to join us today. It's a survey of graduates of EPIs from 2012-13, conducted during the fall of '14. It's with the intention of incorporating data into their score, but as you just heard, we didn't feel we got a big enough response rate to do that. We did feel that the overall findings, though, are helpful and help us think through some of the issues that, the way it looks to students, I think seven hundred or so, a year out, you know, how they feel after teaching for a year. So, please, with that in mind.
Sure. So, we are going to go through this survey, just a couple more introductory things. We did share this information with, I'm going to read the, because I always get this wrong, Directors and Representatives of Teacher Education Programs, or DARTAP, and they said, well, wouldn't the state board love to hear this information? So, we really wanted to make sure that you did. And also, again, I guess I'm just on the Twitter own horn, Ben Wigan a little, but we develop all these surveys ourselves in-house, so all of these multiple surveys key to the standards. And for any of you who've done any work with survey development, it's no small feat. So, just appreciate the team kind of keeping with it. And then you're giving it to institutions who are all PhDs, who had classes in measurement and survey construction, and have lots of good opinions on how this is working, so it's been a labor of love to get these surveys to the qualities that they're at now, so we're excited about them. Do you have Phil?
So, the original batch, we sent out four thousand five hundred and sixty-nine invitations. We only had a response of seven hundred and fifty-eight surveys, so sixteen point nine percent. During the initial distribution, we tried many different techniques to improve participation, and we measured how many additional responses we received after deploying each technique in hopes that we could find the most effective ones. So, this year, we're about to deploy this again, and we'll focus on the more effective measures for distribution. When we attributed those back to a particular institution, we had a wide range of results. Some institutions had zero responders, and some had up to thirty-three percent responses.
What do you think, without naming, what do you think might account for the zero anyway? That seems pretty.
What would count for the zero? Bad email addresses. So, sometimes when they leave an institution, they have their college or university email address in there, and they don't change it, and we can't reach them. And very small N size for a particular institution. Yep. So, who responded? The vast majority of responders were white and female. You know, that's probably shocking. The average age was, is that twenty-two to twenty-five? Yes, twenty-two to twenty-five. I was trying to read that on my chart. The certificate type of responders was primarily secondary, which was interesting. I thought I would have actually predicted elementary. That was a unique result. We asked them whether they found employment or not. Seventy-eight percent of the responders found employment. Of those, seventy-nine percent were happy with that placement, so we thought that was good news. Of those who did not, sixty-five percent of them were still seeking employment in teaching, so they were not discouraged after one year of finding employment.
Sixty-five percent of the twenty-two percent.
Yes, exactly. So, what types of teaching jobs did they find? The majority found full-time certified, but as you can see, it's pretty scattered here. They found some kind of job in education, any job in education, really. What we found here is that individuals that had an elementary certificate with endorsement reported that they found employment, they were happy, more frequently than elementary only, which is good for us to know because we do think there is value of adding on content area endorsements as an elementary teacher, and this shows us that we think you might be more employable or more satisfied with your placement if that's the case. Again, we need more data to draw any major conclusions, but. We asked them how difficult it was to find a job. It varied between somewhat difficult and very difficult. It wasn't an easy task. So, here is where we get interesting results about their perceptions. These are their perceptions about how they felt for seeking a job, and it varies from kind of the highest to the lowest here. We do have expectations for the preparing institution to help them feel ready for seeking employment when they leave the institution or the program. We asked them how prepared they felt for their jobs. This wasn't surprising to us, I don't think. We believe that there is a lot of emphasis on designing learning experiences in their preparation program. We have more concern about whether they're being prepared to use assessments and data effectively in addressing the needs of special populations and technology, which are the things that we see are lower here. These results mimic what we actually see when they're leaving the institution and they provide their perceptions. They are just more strongly noted a year out. So, we see the same concerns from those leaving the institution. They are more emphasized in this survey, more pronounced. In what areas did they feel most prepared? We were happy that they seemed to think that their clinical practice was valuable. We'd like to see we can make those even more valuable by improving the quality and placing expectations around those experiences. And this did not surprise us either. The areas that they felt least prepared were working with English language learners, both with instructional strategies, accommodations, and the legal requirements, and working with online learning environments and digital content.
I would say that, just as an aside, there's a lot of good news in this, because I, when I was pushing for this a few years ago, it was partly based on my own daughter's experience, coming out of teacher prep and then working for a few years, and I think it's actually higher than I would have expected in many of these areas, even the technology area, I thought, would have been a lot lower. So, I mean, in general, that's very positive and can all improve, but I want to shout out to the EPIs on some good news there. And this is a constructive way to get at it, rather than kind of the Fed and, you know, labeling and all that. This is trying to.
They were asked to provide open-ended comments about the strengths of their institutions and the top three categories they identified with pedagogical preparation, which is interesting, Melody, because of what you brought up, their clinical experiences, and their personal relationships with faculty. When I was listening to our earlier presentation, that personal relationships really resonated with me. Research actually shows that that's one of the most important factors in K-12 learning, and you heard it from students here about the personal relationships with their teachers. And even at this level, as adults going through their preparation program, personal relationships had great value for them with their teachers. Their areas for improvement in the top three are working with students with exceptionalities, diverse backgrounds in English learners, classroom management strategies, and we have narrowed that down to behavioral management, rather than the day-to-day operations of the classroom, which was always a question that I wondered about, and assessment and data literacy. And I think if we had to choose, these probably would have been our top three areas where we thought there would be, that more preparation was necessary. Question?
At the risk of, you know, over the years, I've been a superintendent over twenty-five years, and it always kills me when you have in an interview someone telling you their biggest fault is that they work too hard or something like that, and you kind of just wince. But having said that, I've really encouraged the team, and it's still, this is a very modest team, to do a little bit of what Vanessa's still doing cautiously. This is a lot of work. They did it very thoughtfully. It's going to be very helpful data for everyone to improve on, but I don't want to, I don't want to understate the success of it. I think a lot of it started when Flora was here, so I want to acknowledge Flora, who's in our audience, so thank you for that. And then it just keeps getting better each year, but it's taken a lot of effort on their part, and appreciate it. Anything else from the board? This one's kind of more self-explanatory in some ways, but, so we're good? Great, thanks, guys, very much. Very appreciated, very helpful. Yes, ma'am?
Sorry.
It's okay.
It goes back to, I was kind of holding, it goes back to the first presentation. So, and I also wanted, before I get into my questions, to commend having, you know, a more holistic view and not just getting at test scores, which I think is sort of the direction, there's going to be more of an emphasis, it's coming out of feds, and so I appreciate having a more well-rounded view than just basing on standardized tests, even if it's based on growth and standardized tests. But my question is, I'm concerned about diversity, and I'm concerned about, you know, because fifty percent of the measure, as I understand, is based on the test, content area test. So, if there's certain populations that have, don't test as well for whatever, you know, and that might not be a good reflection of what their knowledge actually is, I'm concerned about having less diversity among our ranks of teachers. And is there, so is there something being done, or is that considered? If a institution really works at having a diverse population, getting teachers in of a certain, you know, a certain community that is of similar background, I mean, is that, is that measured at all? Is that considered at all? And I think, I think it should be. They make an effort to provide opportunities for people from the community to go back and teach in their own communities, and because, you know, some folks say that there are studies that show that that can have a positive. that show that that can have a positive effect on the education of the kids. So my question is, is that something you're considering?
Mm-hmm. So we agree. We, diversity in our candidates, our teacher candidates, is a concern of ours as well and the institutions. And so we're working together to try and figure out some strategies to attract candidates of diverse backgrounds to our programs. We used to measure it in the last performance score before we made these adjustments. And what we found was a couple of things. We used the traditional definition of diversity and didn't, didn't count, for instance, our Native American populations. And so that was something that we wanted to add moving forward to give credit to those institutions for those regional populations. We also found that most students, we actually have mapped this out on a regional map, which is really interesting. Most students go to a university within a radius of their home and they return back and teach within an area that's within a radius of their home. And so institutions in the UP, for example, were having great difficulty attracting diverse candidates. Should they be penalized for that? I don't know. It's definitely much more difficult for them than institutions that are located in other areas of the state. I think the federal regulations will require that we put it back in, in some form. So what we are doing now is trying to work with institutions to say, if we need to put this back in, what is the best way that we can do this that considers some of those factors?
You raise an interesting question that gets to, I think, what John was kind of alluding to about the pipeline and about the various places of quality measures in the pipeline. And every time you put in a hard stop, you run the risk that that hard stop will be differentially impactful across a variety of types of people, right? You can imagine all kinds of reasons. And so you have to kind of go through this process and we're trying to do that process not just with us, but with all of you, with the superintendent, with stakeholders to say, okay, where are we at in terms of this quality measure? Do we want this? Is this the right one? And then if it is, then let's look at who is it impacting and is it because of the measure or because there's something about their preparation that's off? So do you remediate the preparation or do you fix the measure? I would say on our test, the test here, like this, the teacher test, go through the same kind of bias and content review that our K-12 tests do. So, so I'm going to say, the answer is they're not biased. You're raising a larger question is, do some students struggle with taking standardized tests, period? Probably, in a variety of ways, again, so... But you're right. I think we have to ask those hard questions every time. Like if we're going to enforce a hard stop, which is a place for quality for our students, it also can have impact on the pipeline.
This particular, as it pertains to these tests, that's one of the reasons why they can take it as many times as they want, although, you know, cost gets prohibitive eventually when you're retaking, retaking, retaking. But it's one of the few things around our preparation structure that's actually legislated. They have to pass the contentary exams before they can receive their certificate. And we have had to turn away sobbing candidates and their families who have spent a lot of money on their preparation and cannot pass the contentary exams. And it is very sad.
I'm just thinking of it in terms of measuring the institution. Because I know I've talked to folks at Wayne State and they say that they will, they put a great emphasis on trying to attract people from the community that were given a shot and they think they would be good, you know, of being a candidate. So they're, they may not have a high bar to enter, but it's almost like they're more accessible and trying to help people get to that. And they're penalized for that. So then what it'll do is it will, it will make Wayne State deny, have a higher bar, not even people a shot to try to become a teacher. So, I mean, it's, but then there's people who, if they're not prepared and they can't come out, they wasted their money. So it's, it's a difficult issue, but it, it, the higher bar may deny some really great teachers that could have made it through. So that's the cost.
I agree. It's a, it's a difficult, it's a conundrum that we haven't figured out a great solution for yet, but it's very much on our, something we talk about a lot.
And I don't want to miss the chance to build on that, but if you remember when there was a fair amount of criticism to some institutions for this, folks that weren't feeling well on the, what's the acronym again? The M...
MTC.
I mean, this is also, this is a, this is a continuum. I mean, if we're not preparing them as well as they could be prepared in K-12, then, because those are pretty much K-12 standards that should be met. And then if they haven't, it's a pretty heavy lift then for the higher ed institution to get them ready. That's, that's the catch 22. But the more we can focus on what we spend most of our time on, of course, is the K-12 stuff and keep improving achievement for our kids there, then you minimize that lift. Well, thank you, guys. Yes, ma'am?
One question about the clinical, what we used to call student teaching, right? I noticed that that's one of the strengths that people liked was the clinical experience. And I wondered if, if we have any recommendations, I don't know if it would be pertinent to this measurement, but any recommendations for the, for the preparation institutions to how much clinical experience they should be providing to this, just to the teacher students?
We do. Yes, we have a minimum requirement in our administrative rule that we do not, that we would like to see raised. And so that's what the work group is working on right now. That's institutions, K-12 and MTE, and they will come forward with a recommendation and I suspect it will be a longer requirement around those experiences.
I think that's probably a good idea.
Yes. I suspect they will also come forward with multiple clinical experiences in a variety of different settings.
This is a profession that isn't valued enough, as we know, and the more we can get closer to kind of a medical model of actual hands-on and all that, we'll all be better off, so...
So will they be paid as residents?
That would be great, I think. Seriously.
Residents are paid as medical model, if they're using the medical model, not much could get paid.
And we have legislators that support that and they could propose a bill in support of that if they chose, and we've said that would be great.
That would be wonderful. It's a great investment on part of a state to do so, so thank you so much. And we amended our agenda a bit and so at 11, we're not that far off. We're, the proposed governor's plan for Detroit and John asked for it to be amended. I was appreciative that you guys worked out and Karen agreed to come on board to give us some insights there. And John, I know has some opening...
As my way of introducing Karen and for the context for discussing the governor's plan, is, you know, a month ago, we had the coalition members from Detroit with their recommendations and since then, the governor did share his plan for Detroit. Obviously, this is very, very important. It's really important for us as a state to do well and to do effectively. We do need to take action to better manage what is now a landscape of different types of public schools in Detroit to better quality education. And I'm happy that Karen and the governor's office were eager to come and discuss the ideas with us and the goal is to help us all better understand public stakeholders and us, what's being proposed, how it might work, but fundamentally, where we might go to help support the most effective strategy for Detroit. So thank you, Karen.
And you've been here a couple of weeks, so come on.
Yeah. Yeah, no problem. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to share a couple of things. First, just to make sure that everyone understands that the governor's plan is a work in progress at this point. We are still tweaking the plan and making adjustments to the plan based on input that we are receiving from all corridors in, in the schoolhouse, to say the least. So I don't know that I will be able to answer every question that you have because there might not be an answer for it yet, but your input and reaction will be helpful as we move forward, so I appreciate the opportunity. There are two documents, and I think Marilyn just stepped out. Oh, there you are, I'm sorry.
Do you want one of them displayed now?
Yeah, if we could do to the, it's time to act one, thank you. And I apologize that I sent these so late this morning. Been out of town a little bit, but we have these pieces. And I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this particular slide because this will not be new data to you. Do you all have a paper copy of this while Marilyn seeks to...
No, I'm trying to...
Because I think there are some behind you on the table there.
All right.
Let me, let's go with paper.
That's good.
This one here. I got yelled at for writing notes on the screen when...
Help that.
Good old paper.
Good old paper. That's right. Good old paper.
A renewable resource.
Colored.
Do we take a picture of it with our phone?
Yeah.
Social media it around?
And then read it from your little screen.
That'd be great. Probably not new news to anyone on, around this table about these three boxes that are on this particular sheet of paper. We continue to have declining enrollment in Detroit Public Schools and that presents certain challenges, of which you are well aware. Detroit, as you know nationally and in the state, has unfortunately been characterized as one of the lowest performing school districts in the nation. And one of the things that we were asked all the time is, well, you know, what does that mean? What are people looking at when they're saying that? What, so, so give us some evidence of that. And the piece that we chose to share on this document was the percent of high school students who are proficient in various subjects. And you'll see that we have separated out in this document, not only the subjects, but DPS's average score, the state average, and Detroit charter. So you have that full picture within the boundaries of the city of Detroit. The issue here is really how DPS is doing against the state average. That's, that's the story of that particular slide. And that simply isn't good enough for the 100,000 students who go to school every day in Detroit, 47,000 of them or so in the traditional DPS structure, another 50,000 or so in charters, and I believe at a last count, about 15,000 to 17,000 who are using the schools of choice mechanisms to actually go to schools outside of the boundaries of Detroit. So parents have made a multitude of choices in an effort to find high-quality education for their children. The other side of this is the debt which Detroit continues to accumulate. That equates to just paying off the accumulated debt to about $1,100 per student per year. So that's money that obviously can't be reinvested back into the classroom, back into teaching, supplies, safety, so it's just money that has to go to pay off accumulated debt and that's just a lot of resource that's not getting to kids every year. If, if this challenge was just on one side of the equation, if we just had the financial challenges, it would be daunting. If we just had the academic challenges, it would be daunting. To have both of those challenges at this particular point in time at this depth is obviously creating a tremendous amount of consternation, concern about what happens with 100,000-plus students who call the city of Detroit home. The state of Michigan is stronger with a stronger Detroit. It just, it's, it's just a fact. We need a strong Detroit in a, in a strong Michigan economy, in a strong Michigan portfolio of opportunities, from everything from entertainment to the economy, everything. We need a strong city of Detroit. And where the governor is, and I believe this is, I believe this is true, is that you rarely find a strong revitalized city without a strong revitalizing school district. They are so part and parcel of each other. It is really hard to find a strong, especially in urban environment, that does not have a strong school district and vice versa. So tremendous effort, as you know, has been put into revitalizing the city and putting it back in, on a good trajectory for revitalization and economic vitality and infrastructure improvement. Now we have to get very, very intent upon how do we create that other incredible asset in that city, which is its young people? Because they're going to have to contribute to the revitalization of the city. So that's why it's daunting because you have both aspects of the school district, which are coming at us sort of at once. And the governor's plan is an opportunity, we believe, to address both sides of that and create sort of a new lease on life for the operators, but more importantly, and fundamentally more importantly, for the children who live within the city limits. So that's a bit of backdrop and the, the governor was very, very intrigued by, appreciative of the coalition report. There are so many good aspects to the coalition report. You know, it's sort of unfortunate, I think, that there was concentration on four or five aspects of what was really a very deep report. There were, I have 25 recommend, I mean, it was a long list of recommendations for the schools and for the community. And so many of those are such exceptionally good ideas, but they, they don't require policy. They don't require legislation. They could be embraced by schools today. They really could be embraced by schools today. And so we chose not to concentrate on those aspects of the coalition report because they don't require, and you probably don't want policy around all of those things. You probably want schools just to embrace some of those wonderful strategies about parent involvement, teacher improvement, and, and how that works together, infrastructure improvement. So that leaves us with then other aspects. And there are some things in the coalition report which the governor thinks are spot-on and there have been a lot of conversation about that. And then there are other things in the report, and this won't surprise you, that the governor has some other ideas about and how we might move forward with those things. So the second sheet of paper that is coming around, which looks like this, it is a sideways sheet of paper, is really the, is really sort of the bird's eye view of the structure for answering both sides of this challenge, which is the financial side and the academic side of the challenge. At about $483 million of accumulated debt, that doesn't include the year-to-year operational structural deficit, that's just what's accumulated in Detroit, almost a half a billion dollars of debt. There are a couple of avenues that you certainly could potentially walk down. I think the governor is proposing the one that he believes will be the least disruptive to students. And that's at the heart of this. What the plan calls for is a financial review commission that would in fact oversee two arms of, of Detroit Public Schools. One, which is the, the old DPS, if you will, the current DPS now. I know the, the media is using the term sort of an old co, new co vernacular and that's fine, it may make it easier to understand, but that, that all Detroit Public Schools would continue to exist for the purposes of paying off that accumulated debt. Would maintain its currently elected board and its current emergency manager. Financial review commission would also continue oversight of the new city school district from the, from a financial perspective, but it would really allow then that school district because it has a bit of a reset under this plan, to really focus its efforts and its resources on educating students with a board that is initially appointed by the governor and the mayor, which then will eventually return to an elected board within the school district. So that's the, the financial side of that picture. And this is a similar structure to what was used in Muskegon Heights, similar structure to what was used in Highland Park. What is so drastically different in Detroit is that you have 47,000 students. And so you have to do something very different than what was done in Muskegon Heights and Highland Park on the educational side of the ledger. And that's the right-hand column of thinking on this plan, starting at the top, the creation of a Detroit Education Commission, which really has a singular goal, and that is to hire an education manager for all of the public school entities within the city. The commission would be jointly appointed by the governor and the mayor, and they would oversee the, the contract of the Detroit Education Manager, whose number-one goal is to ensure quality across all schools, traditional and charter, that are serving the students with, with, that are going to school within the district's boundaries. And then managing on behalf of the parents, a universal enrollment system for students who live in the city, so that parents would understand the options that are available to them and be able to access those options and have one place to go to, to access those options. But we believe it would be the Detroit Education Manager's job to ensure that only high-quality traditional and charter providers within the city are allowed to serve the students of Detroit and would begin working with some of the lowest performing schools in an effort to turn those schools around in a rapid way. Because we have to move that trajectory forward for those students as quickly as possible. We cannot afford to lose this generation of students. We cannot afford to lose this generation of students. And that oversight would be over both, traditional and charters. As you know, there is a tremendous amount of excess capacity within the city right now in terms of seats and buildings. And we would also expect that the Detroit Education Manager would have an overall facility management plan for the city. We have, in some cases, educational options where we have few students, and in some cases we have lots of students where we have fewer educational options, so at least high-quality options. So it will be managing the facility portfolio within the district as well to ensure high-quality options for all students K-12, so for their whole educational experience while in the city. So that's the grand plan. As I said, it is absolutely a work in progress. We are taking our time with constructing the language that would obviously be necessary, the bill language that would obviously be necessary to create this structure. And we continue to have robust and recurring conversation with lots of parties, certainly and most importantly, with leaders in Detroit. So with that...
I wanted to just fill in the board on one additional issue that Karen wouldn't necessarily have a context for, and that is that my main job here is to facilitate your voice, and I'll do that in 30 seconds. I've put into our budget, all the way back to Governor Granholm's time, $200 million a year that we thought should have been in there to support and at that time be able to eliminate the debt that's grown since. Because there has been this state function, one way or the other, in Detroit for most of the last 14 years, is it? And feel strongly about that. So I just want to go on record that I appreciate the way that's being tried. You know, there's still be a challenge in the field, because it has some, I would prefer an out-and-out allocation appropriation by the legislature, but I think that's part of this whole debate. The point is that this is a tremendous burden on the back of these kids that you can't support with less than 50,000 kids and this giant debt. So we brought it in each year. This is all the way back to a Democratic governor also, and it's hard for them to make that lift. So I just want to go on record for that. The second thing is just, I want to remind the board, you know this anyway, but we really are lucky to have in that office a public educator who's been through a lot of this stuff and can, I'm not in that room. So I sleep better at night knowing that Karen's in there. I played a fairly direct role in trying to encourage that to happen compared to some other alternatives, and thank her for leadership on this. And now let's just go into this. John?
A couple of comments, but first I want to make sure everybody on the board has a chance to ask questions and make their comments while we get Karen.
And I'm here to take your feedback back into the process as well. So don't hold back, like I'm sure you would.
Oh, I thought you wanted to make some open...
I'm going to, at the end.
Oh, okay. So one of the concerns, I mean, I have many concerns, obviously, but one of the concerns that I have is the fact that Detroit is ground zero for unlimited charter school, traditional school, cyber school, whatever expansion, without any thought to overall strategy for where we need schools, why we need schools, how we need schools. And what I don't see in this plan is addressing the continuation of just, you know, authorizing charter schools because somebody decides that they think they want to have a charter school today. Without that foundational stability, it's hard for me to imagine how any school, charter, traditional, or private, can really be successful, because from year to year, they have no idea what their enrollment's going to be. Kids are migrating throughout the city and even outside of the city. And I don't see anything in this plan that says this Detroit Education Manager will not only be responsible for closing schools, but also who gets to determine whether or not new schools continue to open up throughout the city. And until you have that stability, I think anything that we do is a Band-Aid. And I really hate to see people lose their democratic rights so that we can create another Band-Aid that ultimately will not be successful until we really truly address the underlying problem.
I appreciate your comment, and I absolutely assure you that the governor's not interested in a Band-Aid approach to Detroit. I think like you, like maybe most of Michigan, we are ready for a solution, a real solution within the district. It's certainly the governor's goal that the education manager will have the ability to manage both quality and location of schools. I don't know what this will look like necessarily, because I say we're still negotiating through and crossing some Ts and dotting some Is in the bills. So it's hard to say exactly what this will look like. But if you have an education manager whose job is to reform, reconstitute, and focus on the lowest-performing schools, whether they be charter or traditional, and ensure that they become high-quality schools through whatever process, I think Detroit becomes a different marketplace. So I think that's a component of this, is that this individual is going to have that opportunity to manage from a quality perspective. So anybody who wants to do business in the city of Detroit in the schools is going to have to understand that they're going to have to do so at a very high-quality level for its students.
Other folks in the show?
Go around, I'm sure everybody has a question.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, okay.
All right.
I have a couple of concerns. One is, I know that the way that we look at what is quality and what isn't is by, again, standardized test scores. And it doesn't seem to take into account the high concentrations of poverty and the effects of poverty in Detroit. For instance, I adopted a young man at 16 who had a less than a one-point GPA. He was hearing impaired, his parents were drug addicted. So I adopted him, got him hearing aids, went to the same school, same teachers, same everything, and became a four-point student, because he had his needs addressed. So if we, so for me, in my heart, I know, it is not a simple solution of just looking at standardized test scores to really give kids what they need and to be successful. So when we're measuring and looking at closing schools, I look at the, on what basis? I mean, the federal government is moving away from using high-stakes standardized tests as a measurement. The Machino Center itself has correlated with poverty more than anything else. So when he's looking at that, and when these, because of the program that was put by, I worked on the Policy Committee of the Detroit Coalition. So when they looked at that, they looked at really having community-informed input at the school level, at a regional level, and so it would inform decisions about what schools should close and what shouldn't close, where they should be located. And I'm wondering if this will be a simple, we're going to look at standardized tests, going to close these schools, and/or is it going to be more holistic? How much is the community going to be involved in this to make sure that they're actually a good, sound decision and not just a rush to a decision that is detrimental to the community?
No, it's a valid, it's a good question. And I'm taking notes on all of these, by the way. So I didn't want you, Cassandra, to think that I was dismissing the question. I have it written down here. I can't imagine a plan that would use a single measure to make decisions that are as political, emotional, and disruptive potentially to students and to families and to educators and others who live in the community. I've not certainly seen or heard any discussion about a single measurement type of situation that there would have to be multiple inputs into those decisions, and those are still being worked out. But I want to make sure that, you know, and even in the conversation earlier about standardized testing, I don't know that it's an either-or, I think it's a both-and. There's both the rigor and the performance on academic standards, however they're measured, whether through a growth or a summative assessment piece. That is important, as well as that environmental and those wraparound services that, you know, you're speaking to, especially when families are highly challenged. The culture that a teacher creates within the environment, and then all those additional opportunities that students have to demonstrate their interests and passion. If we optimize one side for the other, we sub-optimize the other side. So I don't believe it's ever either-or, or that there's a thought that it ever will be either-or, it's both-and. But to have all of those wonderful opportunities without a strong academic base and students who are reading at or near grade level and are consistently improving or being able to master numeracy and can demonstrate that they're doing that, we're setting them up for a different kind of failure beyond the experience. So I think it's a system that will not look at it as either-or, but both-and. So multiple measures will be necessary.
Richard, if you choose. John suggested going around the table, but I don't know if everyone...
On the testing matter, you know, in the hospital, they use multiple measures to assess the health of the patient. But if the thermometer shows that the patient is, you know, 102, you've got a sick patient. And if the thermometer shows that the patient is 50 degrees, you've clearly stumbled into the morgue. And standardized tests are that thermometer, which we dare not, now, you know, someone's got a fever, you know, you can put ice on them, ice them down or something like that, and that may even help a little. But obviously, you've got to address the sickness where the sickness is. And although I differ with my colleagues on many assumptions, I do agree with their fundamental concern. This plan does not really address Detroit's, the source of Detroit's problem. I remember when I was a kid, my aunt had a station wagon, and, you know, the brakes were bad, and so what did she do? She bought a new motor for it. And she spent a lot of money for a good product that didn't address the problem. And so often, we have imagined that family neglect, that the poverty of values can be compensated by an infusion of money. That's where poverty is. It's in the poverty of values. People with four values tend to escape poverty. Truth-telling, honesty with money, and no, I'll give you a lesson in theology later. But, no, it's truth-telling, it's honesty with money, it's work ethic, it's fidelity in marriage. Black families that are married, their poverty rate is in single digits. So I get frustrated when we talk about as if money and government programs could make up for these more basic values. What are we doing in public policy to encourage these four values that correlate with escaping poverty? I do appreciate the opportunity to bring this up, because I've been sitting on these ideas for four years on this board, okay? Now, having said that, having spoken to the fundamentals, there are some good things in the plan. I think that we have to come to terms with the fact that not just DPS enrollment continues to fall, but Detroit is losing people. And it's losing children who are generally born to working folks who have to go where the jobs are. And that's why Detroit's had this 15-year decline. Ironically, the governor's program of building up Michigan's economy is precisely what's needed in Detroit to bring good jobs, which will bring working people, which will bring more families and more students. So we do have to come to terms with the declining student body in the city of Detroit. I think that we need schools that are more responsive to their communities and their needs, and adding an extra layer of bureaucracy, I don't think is the solution. I think that it makes perfect sense, and I think it's just, because people went to Detroit, they spent a lot of money on their kids, and then they moved out. I think it makes sense to shift that debt statewide and free Detroit Public Schools from the burden of that debt. I'm also sympathetic to the argument, how long does the emergency last? I think that DPS, and one of the good things in the plan is the plan to revert back to community elected board. So I think that's a real plus. But I think above all, that parents need choice. And limiting their choice by appointing a czar who'll decide what schools will open and close on the base of as-yet-to-be-determined scale of quality does not appear to me to be a fruitful approach. I would prefer to maximize the choices available to Detroit parents. Schools that have a lot of seats available are obviously the schools to be closed, because people aren't choosing them. And if this plan were put into effect, I believe that the neighboring suburban districts would then become the sites of new charter schools, and both would compete for the students of Detroit.
Thank you. Now, what did you want to weigh in?
Really, the only thing I can think about is the teacher perspective in this situation, just because I don't know enough about it to be able to speak to other things. But I know that there's a lot of talk about attracting teachers to Detroit and keeping them there. And I think that what they are tasked to do in a classroom is much more difficult than what I am. And so in order to keep strong teachers there, you're going to need to give them a lot more support, you know? So when we think of students, if a student is below grade level, we need to not just show a year's growth, but a year and a half's growth. So if you think about that in a similar way to teachers, you can't just give them the same things that you give everybody else, you have to give them much more than you give everybody else. So I think that they have a job that's twice as hard as everybody else. And I don't think that that's being addressed or has been addressed yet. So it's hard to have great teachers where you need them, and it's hard to sustain them if they don't have all the extra things in place that are needed to do that, because nobody will want to go work there. Or they want to and they have the desire to, but they realize that they get burned out really quickly, and then they go on to something else. And then it's like this cycle of starting over every time. So I think that if you want these schools to really show growth and improvement, you put the right teachers there and give them the right support, and then everything else, I think, could fall into place.
By the way, that's a great anticipatory set for our item this afternoon when we present the Equity Plan to the board, but thank you for that.
And I certainly appreciate that. You know, it's always dangerous when you look at scores in the aggregate, because when you look at aggregate scores even within Detroit, there are bright spots. There are bright spots in the traditional system, there are bright spots in the charter system where they're just blowing the top off, same kids, same families, same issues. They're blowing the top off of it, and the little work that we've done around with those are so much, it comes down to the teacher preparation and embrace of that challenge. And it does take, I think, just a tremendous amount of fortitude to be a teacher in an urban district anywhere in this country, and we have to support them with appropriate development and tools.
Is Eileen, is Eileen sitting next to Karen? Is she on the phone?
Eileen is. Eileen is, and listening. And as I've said a couple of times, I recognize that this is the beginning of a very complicated negotiation on educational values and finances, governance, and the future of children. So I'm delighted to hear a better fleshing out of what's going on. I think there were two pieces of paper, which I can only download, this film, this graph. But I appreciate the details, and I think there are going to be abiding questions from the State Department as the governor goes down this, through this negotiation, Karen. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thanks, Eileen.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Eileen.
Kathleen?
That was the shortest Eileen's talk for a long time. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to discuss this, to talk about, because I've had some concerns, and I've had the same concerns that Cassandra mentioned, of the number of schools that get created, billy-billy, it seems. And Michelle's concerns about the poverty and the need to support the families as much as to support the schools. That has been, I've been concerned about that for years. I used to get... I used to get criticized because I would say we should give more money to the, to Department of Social Services. You know, maybe not as much to us, but more to them, and educators got furious at me. But I think, I've been concerned about it because I think it's a problem. And I think we don't recognize it all the time. And I'm also concerned about what Melo, I don't agree with Richard on this one. I think there's plenty of choice, but with, with Melody's concern about the teachers. You know, in Detroit, they have closed schools. You have to recognize that Detroit has had, is now in its fourth emergency manager. And they have made some questionable decisions, to say the least. They closed, they had to close schools because of declining enrollment, but they closed some of the schools that were supported very strongly by their communities. And where the scores were, were good, they closed some of the best schools. I mean, it was mind-boggling. We tried to get them, we, we, the board tried to get them, we, we gave them guidelines. They ignored them. I don't know how, I don't know that's how they made their decisions, but they were very questionable. And they've created real problems. But they created problems that the charter school was created to, where they'd close a, a public school because of declining enrollment. They opened a charter school and asked more declining enrollment. I mean, it was, it's nut, was nuts. So very, very difficult. So I think that, that's, those decisions, if, if, if this, this commissioner or the manager would be someone who would get involved the communities in making the decisions of where to close the schools. I mean, there were some schools where the communities were so involved and were so supportive, and the schools were doing a good job, and yet they were closed. So that, that was a real, that's a real issue with me. There were, I'm concerned about the future, if any, of the EAA. In this chart, you don't mention the EAA, but that was, that's one of the entities that were, that the coalition was concerned about, the DPS, the charters, and the EAA. In my estimation, if you're looking at ways of, how do you deal with the students who are most in need of help, you don't need the EAA. It's done its job the way it was, it was envisioned. I think the governor had good intentions, but it hasn't worked. And I have visited some of those schools, and I was just appalled at what was going on. I visited a school, went into a class with the chairman of the EAA board, with the principal and me, and we looked, we're sitting in the back of the room, and the kids are working on their computers, laptops. And I tried to ask some of them, what are they working on? They couldn't explain to me what they were working on. The teacher sat at her desk the entire time we were there, never got up, never got up to look at any of the students, what they were doing. I was flabbergasted. I thought the whole idea was to help them and make sure that they were doing work. And what we, and this is what the, the head of, the principal in the, in the room, and the teacher never got up from the desk. I was floored. So I asked the principal, I said, I was very surprised at this. And she said, well, we have peer-to-peer counseling here. And I, I was just amazed because these children needed help from someone who knew what they were supposed to be learning. And to ask their fellow students may not have been the best source of information. The whole business of using the computers so exclusively with that group of students, I think, was not a good idea in the first place. I think computers can be very helpful, and the internet can be very helpful, and all these programs can be very helpful, but you have to have students who are self-motivated to a large extent, that can, can really use it. But I think that they put too much, they, they put too much emphasis on the computers and not enough on, on teacher relationships. Maybe, maybe this was just an aberration, but I didn't think so when it was the leaders of the district that I was with. I thought they would take us to a room that they were showing off. And if this is what they were showing off, I was, I was amazed, I really was. So that concerns me. What is the future of the EAA, and is the governor willing to abandon that and work at it from a different angle?
Well, in, we are still considering, you know, where, you know, where and how the EAA will fit into the process, and we, we just don't have an answer on that right now. But we are, we, we are aware of the concerns, and we're also aware of the potential, but we just haven't, we just don't have an answer yet on where that's going to fit into the, into the construct of this.
How does that all work with, relate to the Reform District now being?
Oh, that's another presentation, Kathleen. No, I'm kidding.
It probably is, but, I mean, I, some of the stuff I read implied, maybe I was inferring incorrectly, that the EAA would be blended into the Reform District, or would be the Reform District, and it would be bigger and then, you know, from other districts, not just Detroit, so.
And we're working on all of that right now.
I don't want to see that. I want to, don't want to see the EA be the model. That's my two cents.
I understand.
Yeah. Well, I have a couple of notes, I think.
Can we let the others get a chime in here? There's something quick.
Yeah, I think, I think I've covered, you covered some of the stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me blow off steam.
No.
Well, it's also videotaped, so you'll get to hear every word. You don't even have to write anything, Karen. Well, I had listened to the coalition last month and was very impressed with what they had to present to us and, and hopeful. And I alluded to the fact that they had gone to Grand Rapids to see the transformation plan that's happening in Grand Rapids, and no, we're not there yet, but there's a lot of good things that have occurred. And, and my philosophy is it takes a village to educate a child. So in our city, the mayor gets involved, the city man, everybody gets involved, the community, everybody. So we're working very hard so we don't have an emergency manager occur in, in our city. So when I listened to the coalition last month, they had a lot of great ideas, but you alluded to the fact that many of those ideas could be implemented today in, in Detroit. So, and they had an, an array of, of people that participated in that study, great educators, great stakeholders. And so my question is, what, who is the governor using in his group? Because you keep saying, we are working, we are working and together, and we haven't met that, you know, what, the question has been asked, we haven't come to a conclusion yet. So my question is, the things that the coalition came forward with and the stakeholders were, that worked in that coalition, were they included in any way in the, I want to call it the transformation plan that the governor is working on, or some of the same people? How is that coalition report going to be correlated, or is it going to be correlated? Because it took a long time to get that together. But if some of those things can be implemented today, you know, I'm, I'm thinking some of those things will be implemented with the governor's plan.
Well, I don't have to tell you that there are multiple stakeholders, right, in, in the conversation or in the design of any plan for Detroit. And certainly, the governor's team has been in, in pretty constant conversation with both coalition leaders and city leaders and district leaders over the components of the plan. I would say that the plans, it may be side by side, if you want to think about them, they have some crossover, and they have some areas where they don't cross over, and that's what we're working through. But just as you have interests and concerns and ideas, and, you know, certainly that will have impact on the governor's plan. We have a lot of legislators who have ideas and thoughts about what ought to be in a plan. They're part of the conversation. So it really is a multi-stakeholder approach of, of the various needs, concerns, issues that come up anytime you're talking about a significant financial restructuring and a significant system design restructuring. Everyone has a lot of questions about it. So the time, we really have multiple stakeholders that we're continuing to meet with, who continue to exercise, like you are now, the opportunity to ask questions and offer insight and, and input into the process.
Thank you. Pam and John?
So I guess, for me, I really pride myself in diplomacy and usually commend it for that, but, you know, actually, as I sit here, if I could turn red, I would because this angers me. I can't because I'm African-American. My parents are both African-American, and please, this is not directed at you, but hopefully you can convey this message. But my parents are African-American, they migrated from the South. And like many people in their community, where they came from, and here, they witnessed, were part of civil rights movements, witnessed people who died for their voting rights and so, and their civil rights. And how dare the governor impose upon these people and erode and attack the civil rights of, of the people of Detroit? These are mainly African-American communities and residents. I can't pull up numbers right now, but I don't know that the governor got 10% of the vote in, in Detroit. I'm not sure. Does anyone know?
Probably not.
I mean, so how does he take it upon himself to appoint and shift away, take away the elected board's power and appoint himself to appoint people to make decisions for the people in Detroit? And so you can deliver that message with as much emotion and animation as possible, but that's a question that, that I have for him. And the, the mayor, who is elected on paper, has said that he doesn't think that this is a good decision, and, and he also feels that this is an attack on democratic as well as myself, civil rights. And so I think that we set ourselves up for possible litigation as it relates to, to that as well.
You know, certainly pass along the concern, I, and, and I'll do it emotionally, I absolutely promise. I've, I've known to get a little emotional myself from time to time, so I will pass it along with appropriate emotion. I think at the heart of the governor's plan is that we are not managing very well for the children of Detroit right now. That...
And I'm sorry, because right here, there were two thoughts. One was the EAA, that's failed. So when do you say that we don't have it right? And when do you say, who is the "we" that's in this discussion? I think that John invited the governor, you in place of the governor. The governor did not. I don't know that he sent you here, or I don't know how this body has been involved. So I just want to point that out as well.
Well, the invitation came late last week, so, and I was going to be here, so, you know...
And this is not directed at you. But I'm saying, as we talk about the "we" and the inclusion of these decisions, you were invited, I mean, you're here, but you were invited to talk on this topic. I don't know that we would have heard this had we not have invited this topic. So, I mean, I guess I have an issue with how, you know, we've arrived at where we are and who's included in this decision-making, because the EAA is, is failing, and, and that's been admitted. So I, I do understand the issues that we have in Detroit and our urban districts, but I don't know that the governor has the right answers. But, I'm sorry, excuse me.
It was important that we both invite the governor's office to come talk, and we talk back, and we work together. We did, with the governor, Brian, a couple of weeks ago, to try to engage on all these issues constructively, but appreciate your comment.
I just wanted to add one thing to panel. She's talking as an African-American, I'm, I'm white, I live in Detroit, and I feel the same way. I feel very, I think it's wrong to deprive Detroit voters. We have elected a board, and they have been given no, taken, all of the roles taken away. Now they're going to be in charge of paying down the debt. They don't have to do anything, they just, they just sit there. That's...
Can I, um, John? You know, everybody could have many more things to say and recommend.
The only thing I give a little is that...
Okay, we'll do that, but let me just say a couple of things. One, thanks Karen for the explanation and for listening and taking back these kinds of issues and concerns and ideas and recommendations and encouragements that are on the minds of many who care about education, care about Detroit. The, the four things that I would just note, one, you know, the prospect of really managing for quality a system of schools, charter, DPS, and I would hope EA or any schools that are down there, for quality is a very exciting and important undertaking, and I hope that that's really what we end up doing here, so that we're, we're managing the system of all public schools in a way that does, and I very much appreciated your articulation today, so that we ensure that they're all delivering quality education for, for young people. I was very pleased that this plan says, let's give Detroit a fresh start, and let's take care of the debt as the grand bargain, you know, helped Detroit make a fresh start. And I hope, I don't, I didn't agree with everything Richard laid on the table, but I was pleased that he and others say this is a very important statewide responsibility because we, we broke it in some sense, we own it, we need to help fix it, and I'm glad that, for that. I think the two points by way of work in progress encouragement, you know, Pam can speak differently than any of us, but one of the coalition recommendations, and as I said to you privately, that was, I think, important, was we've got to have the political accountability for who runs the schools be owned by the people of Detroit through their elected folks. And I know this is, says we'll transit to that as fast as possible. I'm disappointed that the mayor was not willing to put his hand up and say, I want to have that responsibility. Maybe he can reconsider this because the mayor, among any of the elected officials, certainly could have the majority appointments to any board and/or could make the appointments themselves and transition to a DPS board. I think that would be very important for the reasons that, you know, Pam articulated. Lansing takeover, it just engenders another round of, of that kind of suspicion, hostility, and, and even as well attention as it may is, it just produces the kind of backlash that isn't about moving ahead. The final thing is, and to Cassandra's and others' concern, the commission and manager, you said clearly that they would be managing for quality, all schools, charters and none. I think they need some teeth, there needs to be clarity about how they get to do that so that we aren't seeing the continued proliferation of anything, everything, many schools everywhere with or without quality education. And so those are, again, my encouragements, but I very much appreciate your dialoguing, your help today in airing out some of these important topics, and also how we can help this effort be as successful as possible, which is all of our goal. So, thank you.
Michelle, Richard, Cassandra, Mike.
Okay. I, um, I wanted to, I wrote something up, I'd actually given it already to the Lieutenant Governor, but I, so I gave it to him a lot of typos, so if you could pass this along again. Um, this is just, I just wanted to call your attention to the graph here. This is, okay. This was when I was on the Policy Committee for the Coalition, the Special Fund Office here in the Department, Office of Special Ed, put together some data for us to look at around special ed. And even though it's a focus on special ed, it, it illustrates a larger concern. Number one, that the number of, about 17% right now, this is the fall of 2014, were special ed students with IEPs. And I would argue that there's probably a lot more who don't have IEPs that are not being diagnosed. The EAA had 9.7. Wayne County, all of the charters in Wayne County had 8.7% of their population had IEPs. And charters with Detroit students had 9.7. So, you know, can, you know, almost double of what is in the other schools. But when you break down whether a school is a Detroit public school, the EAA or a charter, and this is in all of Wayne County, it, what it clearly illustrates is that the vast majority of the special ed students, especially those who are high needs... of the special ed students, especially those who are high needs, are overwhelmingly in the traditional public schools. And if you look down to the EAA, you see almost a total row of zeros of how much time and expense they spent on kids with special needs or special education. And you look down the total percentages of total amount of time in all of Wayne County, and you see that all of the charters in Wayne County spent zero on kids with moderate cognitively, that are moderately cognitively impaired, severely cognitively impaired, visually impaired, what is it, severely, multiply impaired. And those kids are going to the traditional schools, and they are very expensive. And so what this has created in Detroit is about a $28 million deficit every year, because special ed is not, so parents have the right legally to demand certain services, right? But the schools don't get the money to provide those services. And they are not, so it is not a profitable proposition. And since so many of our schools are profit-driven, especially within the charters, they are not going to want to take those kids, or, as they say, and I understand, that they're not able to take the kids because they haven't invested in the services to provide, which I still think is a sort of discrimination, might be more institutional than intentional. But what this shows is that there are structural problems that, and even though I am honestly very grateful for the governor for looking at ways to help get more money into the classroom instead of all this money coming off the top. But unless we look at the structural problems, and then this, and this is not just in Detroit, this is all over the state. So there are, so if, so how, like, what would be the incentive to make, you know, people say, "Oh, the charters are for innovation for kids," you know, why can't kids with autism have an innovative school? Why does it have to be only the kids that get skimmed off the top? So my concern, and what I think this, and one of the recommendations when they, I was asked, because I was speaking a lot about special education, and as you probably know, I have a lot of, I live in Detroit, I raise a lot of children, none of them have severe disabilities, so this is near and dear to my heart. And I personally experienced being rejected from a lot of charter schools, because with my kids, they wouldn't take them. So, and they're very nice people, they just said, "Oh, we don't have the services, I'm sure you'll find something else." And it was usually directed toward traditional, and thank God for traditional public schools that would take them, even though at financial loss. So when they asked me what I would do, I said, "What we need is weighted or differentiated funding." So schools that actually do take these kids get the reimbursements they need to stay afloat. And so it's not a disincentive, like a kid is a hot potato that nobody wants. And there ended up being segregated more and more into certain schools and not having choice. These kids do not have choice. So I think that that, and again, I'm looking, could apply to English language learners or other kids who are hard to teach, but unless these sort of structural things get looked at, I think it's going to impact financially and academically. And, you know, to me, it's just a lawsuit waiting to happen, when I'm looking at this. I mean, if it's, and I know that there are people looking at it. So hopefully, it can be addressed. And thank you again for letting me say that.
I appreciate that. And I will take this data back, and we'll take a look at this as well. I don't have to tell you that, you know, Michigan's system of funding special education is varied and wide across the state. You know, the combination of federal effort, state effort, and local effort is different ISD to ISD. So that creates some challenges in and of itself. So, you know, you will have districts where there's a high level of special ed funding, and then you'll have districts where there's a very low level of special ed funding. Most of that on local effort, because the state and federal effort has a tendency to be more consistent. My understanding, and I could be wrong about this, but my understanding in Wayne County is that low incidence populations are educated primarily within the Wayne County structure and attributed to the millage effort in Wayne County. So it really becomes less important what door the student comes through if they're very low incidence, so high need, because their services are going to be very similar regardless of if that's a charter door or a DPS door.
If I could just, the CDC has kids with autism at being about 1 in 50 right now. It's not a low incidence.
We'll definitely take a look at the numbers, yeah. We'll definitely take a look at the numbers.
Richard, Cassandra, Mike.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify a few ideas. My colleagues have made some assertions about charter schools, which I think are not fully informed. In order to set up, establish a charter school, you have to invest a lot of money. You have to invest a lot of money upfront. Now, that's an advantage to the students and to the community and to the city itself. We need policies that encourage people to invest in Detroit. Now, the other circumstance is if you go from a, toward a system of choice, you're going to find people making choices, and those choices will differentiate. I had the good fortune of being able to send my oldest daughter to a school that had an orchestra program, Detroit School Fine and Performing Arts. Obviously, there was a tendency for musicians to go there, and others who were musicians not to go to other schools. The data that Michelle has provided for us is very encouraging, because it shows that DPS has filled a real need. They've established programs to address these needs, and it's not surprising that having quality programs, that they should attract a greater proportion of the students who would be interested in those programs. So we should not be afraid of the future, we should not be afraid of people exercising choice, and we should not be shackled by an old vision where every school has the same curriculum. And candidly, that's what some of our policies, we talk about raising standards, but what we end up doing is adopting the same, we homogenize the school experience throughout the state. We need policies that will facilitate choice and facilitate differences in curricula. Now, the point that Michelle has made, that needs to be differentiated funding per students, makes perfect sense. And I think that's something, if we give some careful thought on the board and develop policies that make sense, I think that the legislature and the governor can be persuaded. Just an example would be, it costs more to educate a kid in high school, where you need an economy of scale, and the differences between kids, I mean, it's only in high school where you get kids who have maybe six to eight years difference between the students. You don't have that in kindergarten. You don't have kids with more than a year's difference in kindergarten. So there's a reason why it costs less to run an elementary program than it does a secondary program. Our funding formulas, a well-thought-out funding formula, might take this into account. So there's some definite work for us to do and some thinking to do. But we ought not be shackled by the old model of every school, one school in the neighborhood, it will be all things to all people.
Cassandra, then Mike. And we'll try to break for lunch.
I appreciate the fact, Richard, that you think several of us are misinformed, but I have to say that that statement was the most misinformed thing I think I've ever heard. These schools don't attract kids with special needs because they've created a great program and those parents have chosen to go there. They attract them because they are required to provide those services, and those parents are counseled into that. And the point that I think Michelle was trying to make is that when you look at a graph like this, it's not a fair representation of what should be provided for people who have children with special needs. And that's all I'm going to say, because that's not what I wanted to talk about. What I wanted to actually just say is, when I look at this graph that you've provided, I see the current elected school board, which will have very little oversight, the current DPS emergency manager, a City of Detroit Education District Board, who may eventually become elected, but I'm not quite sure what authority, I think it's financial, correct, that board?
No, that board will run the public schools for the 47,000 students in Detroit.
Okay, so then we have the Detroit Education Commission, which is an appointed board, and the Detroit Education Manager, who, so the manager doesn't oversee the schools?
No.
Okay, so what does the manager do?
They oversee the quality of all schools within the city of Detroit. So charter, traditional, and they manage the open enrollment process for those charters and traditionals, to the point that several of you have made, one of the things that open enrollment allows for is for parents to opt for the school that they want, whether that be charter or traditional, and get into the queue for that school without that school having filtering options on its end necessarily.
Okay.
So it's a common open enrollment system for the schools within Detroit.
So it's an open enrollment system, but that person can also oversee the closure and the reconstitution of schools?
Correct.
So my question then becomes, what happens when there is a disagreement between the Detroit Education Manager and the City of Detroit Education District Board? Who ultimately decides what happens?
The checks and balances, the commission really's job is to hire the manager to oversee that. There's, the checks and balance with the manager will likely be with the school reform office. I mean, I, yes, this is, you know, a layer of, I suppose, bureaucracy, but it's really a built-in checks and balances system. So there will be conversation between, so people can hold each other accountable in the system, and there will be a connection to the school reform office as well, so that there isn't an isolation for this individual. At least, that's the way that we're thinking about it, that there will be some crossover with that, so that there's standards too. Several of your point, not a single metric, that people know in advance what those quality standards are and what they're going to be measured against, and will have notification around some of those issues. So those are some of the things that are in the mix on that and why it's at that level. The other thing you have to understand is if we're able to engage the legislature in this conversation, if they're going to commit the kinds of dollars that we're talking about, they're not going to do it without some level of oversight.
So just to answer my question, I think what you said is, it's really the Detroit Education Manager who will be working in conjunction with the reform office, who will have the ultimate authority to say that school is closing?
Richard, then Mike, since you came back.
Just a quick comment, and with that respect, we've heard a couple of testimony from a couple of our colleagues on the board about good schools that were closed for reasons they know not why, and this seems to institutionalize that when you put that authority in someone who's removed from the local, local school. I think a system where the local community has more determination and input would be desirable. Of course, that is the charter school model.
Okay, if I may kind of bring two things. One is, I've been the governor ed advisor to both Governor Granholm and Governor Snyder, and I would remind everyone, the governor ed advisor by definition gives advice and is not the governor. So appreciate your being here, and I appreciate John getting this dialogue going. It's really important, and I know you long enough that these will be thoughtfully discussed with the governor and his team. So appreciate you doing that. Second, just since I've been alerted that there's tweets saying that no one has ever responded to my, from the media, that no one's ever responded as Governor Granholm or Governor Snyder to my request for $200 million in effect to pay off the debt of Detroit. What I was trying to make was a positive that he responded this year. I mean, this is a plan to do that. So that part of it is the only reason I wanted to acknowledge that part. So he's acknowledged that this year, and I do appreciate that. And then finally, I just wanted to say, the ed advisor thing will be a chapter in my book, because it gave me interesting insights into system flaws, to say the least. And one of the things that I wanted to just mention is, the conflict is, the federal system has set us up in effect to be a system of schools, not a system of districts. So the interesting intersection of, important intersection of governance and schools and all that is somewhat muddled now. And, but I wanted to end, at least my part on this, with a positive note. Eight schools in Detroit, I had the privilege, using my authority, to take off of the low priority list, because in spite of all that, the teachers, I'm basically a system of schools guy with proper democratic oversight. Democratic, by Democrat, I don't mean Republican or Democrat, I mean, in the democracy sense. But if you think about it, the teachers and students in those schools, in spite of which system they were in, because some were in the EAA, some were in charters, and four of them were in traditional DPS, have pulled themselves out of that. And not only, in my mind, have they gotten off a couple of the, what I would say, less important metrics, the most important one is they're on a trajectory to 85% proficiency in schools with these tremendous burdens to overcome. So, I mean, I thought I'd just mentioned that all of those have happened, and I think we should, I'm going to look for more opportunities, but to celebrate those schools, obviously, that have done this, together with the teachers and the students that have done it ultimately. And it kind of proves the point that in some ways, it was in a variety of different systems. As I said, four in Detroit, a couple in charters, one in the EAA, but are we good to...
I just wanted to say that I think the fact that the governor recognizes that there is a state responsibility to Detroit to do something about the debt, I think that's a real plus, because most of this debt was accumulated under the auspices of emergency managers or the preceding superintendent who was selected by the board that was appointed by the governor and the mayor previously. And that wasn't an emergency manager, but that was a sort of, that was a state takeover too. So it's been a long time, and as a Detroit-er, I see it as a state responsibility. So it's nice to see the governor sees it that way, too.
Thank you very much. John, when would you like to come back from break?
About five after one.
Five after one. Sound okay? We'll be back, and guests, on the UP level, there's a cafeteria if you're interested. Karen, thanks so much. Appreciate the dialogue today. You've proved yourselves right on this coin thing.
Exactly, your pleasure, but that's nice to say.